The only solution to getting the last two hospitals open and we have had no hard work for mask mandates. There's been so much fear mongering over a virus that is 99.9% recovery rate. There are even there are even therapeutics now available that cure this virus. Our president contracted it and was back on the campaign trail within four days. I have a couple of questions. Why, if this virus is so deadly, does the homeless population not be liberated? Do you don't wear masks? And why, if this virus is so deadly, do we not have hazardous waste receptacles on every street corner? There have been numerous studies throughout the years on the efficiency of universal masking. Dr. Jeffrey Lozmer, an infectious disease doctor at UCLA, described mask wearing as all psychological, not physiological. He said, "Fear spreads a lot faster than the virus and the mask only makes you go lower." Our own government is failed to produce new evidence that counters your source of evidence that masks still work. He writes, "Virus of this virus are about 100 nanometers in size." That's about 100 of the width of my hair. Do you really think this is not viable for masks? Universal masking has proven instead to be detrimental to our health. Within 20 minutes of putting on a mask, it gets saturated with moisture from the nose and the mouth, turned into even more useless. The bacteria and pathogens bill out from the fabric, making the mask a variable bacteria incubator. These pathogens can then lead to various respiratory infections and mask wearing. And wearing a mask outside is absolutely insanity. Our body from a debris oxygen, not still carbon dioxide and germs trapped in a piece of cloth. And fresh air is the best form of oxygen. Before this virus became a political weapon, even Dr. Cox told us that masking was ineffective. The only thing that has changed is fear. An article in the Village has claimed that during the times of pandemic opportunities, opportunistic politicians and positions of power will always lack to want to desperate and aggressive ideas to encourage equality while helping them in some sort of enlightened advancement in technology or understanding. In reality, these seem desperate measures which tried in 1918 and even then it was understood that they couldn't work. Yes, some will get sick but 99% will recover with no need of intervention. Yes, some are at risk but they are also at risk from the flu and pneumonia and there are no treatments. And as time goes, our bodies will develop the antigens to fight this virus as it has the other viruses. The mask, the mask makes you feel safe and by all means wear it. If you are not afraid, then don't wear it. If you are sick, stay home. It's all just common sense. Thank you for taking this information into consideration. Cindy Hutchins. And then she sent an additional email. Goes, "I am writing here because I recently informed of the radical mandate to be proposed by councilmember Serena Combs. Please help me understand how she has handed the power, how she has handed the power to mandate controls on citizens of our created city of honor. You are the mayor. Does she not answer to you? How does she have the power to make laws? How does she have the authority to form a posse of intentions to report to their neighbors? I'm a registered voter and have lived in Palmer for the majority of my life. I was proud of our hollowed out economic channel propaganda behind the COVID virus. It has taken me how acres have responded. If this virus, which has a 99.9% recovery rate, is so deadly, then why have the homeless, the acreage, and the mail not been liberated? Why are there not, why are there not containers for hazardous waste set up on every corner? How can a piece of cloth contain a molecule that is 0.003 size? And why is there so much fear mongering about a virus that has only affected 0.01% of our population? I understand that individuals with underlying conditions are at risk. If those same people are at risk from the flu and pneumonia and those of other illnesses, I understand that individuals sick, they should stay home, but I do not understand why helping individuals should be forced to wear masks. That should be a choice, not a force mandate. I've always felt safe in this town, no matter what craziness is going on in the world. But this pending mandate is a zandine and takes the feeling of safety and throws it to the wolves. How can our president contract the virus to be cured and be back on the campaign trail within three days? Because there is a cure which is available to anyone needing it. There is no need to mandate masks. My request is that you take control of the situation in St. Mercy. I say one city at a time, even say Alaska. I believe we still live in a free country. We should not have to live in fear of our neighbors. That, that will just add to the condition that causes public hate in this country. Please help. Sincerely, Cindy Hutchins. Cory and Sarah Hughes. First, thank you for taking the time to consider her comments. My name is Cory Hughes and I'm the owner of the Palmer Ale House. I've been a member of the staff, managers, and myself at Palmer Ale House as opposed to the adoption of this emergency ordinance. We've taken extensive steps to ensure the safety of our staff, our customers, and our community as a whole from the outset of this pandemic. The Palmer Ale House is currently practicing the Palmer's DPC guidelines for restaurants along with the following. Hand sanitizer is available at all businesses. All service staff are wearing masks. Customers are being seated apart from each other and we are seeing customers in our upstairs room at all hours. We are constantly disinfecting high touch service areas such as POS terminals, door handles, menu, etc. We dispel this day of the art, air filters, and air clearifiers in the restaurant. Please be informed of symptoms or fever reports as marked. We ask for a national map of injured employees in this restaurant. We have third say because available as well as offering guest delivery via the road dash. Additionally, we see, we recently had a case of COVID-19 in the restaurant and responded by closing the restaurant for two days, verifying all customers and employees that were affected and a clean of the restaurant was completed. We encourage the city council to continue to let businesses self-regulate, wearing masks as appropriate and not having orders passed requiring customers to wear a mask. Thank you. Cory and Sarah Hughes on all the entire Ale House staff. Denise Hall. I'm against the suggested mask mandate for Palmer. I believe that the hand hygiene, keeping distance, staying out of everyone's personal space is the best defense for any virus at all. It is a personal responsibility to keep yourself healthy, not the government's job. It is mine and mine alone. Affiliate wearing a mask or not, that's up to me. Thank you. Denise Hall. Angela F. Chutes. F. Chutes. I am not for this order. I might quite appreciate the FDA and CDC recommendations. They are just that, recommendation. Masking surface setting is quite appropriate, but mandating everyone to wear a mask, what happened to my body and my choice? Did we, the people, lose the right to choose? I'm concerned also with the language and arts of state. Businesses are million or so, my evidence, and individuals fails to comply with this order, shall require or compel, we will assess individuals from premises. So now you're going to force private business owners to do your bidding? I am not a city resident, but at one time I lived in Palmer. I moved for several reasons, but the biggest reason is right here. You are more concerned with who wears a mask and you will waste money on this convenience instead of doing the job you were elected to do. People elected you to do a job and take care of the city. They did not elect you to control what was put on their body. If this mask mandate does go into effect on serving my family, then I will not shop in Palmer. The sad thing is that this ordinance will have a profound effect on businesses and customers alike. Angela F. Chutes. Mackenzie Hutchings. Hello, my name is Mackenzie Hutchings. I'm a longtime resident of the Matt's Valley and I'm against the mask ordinance, mandate. I will not follow a mandate if you create one. I will not wear masks. I know many others feel this way and there's also for the people who feel strongly support of the mandate. And what can I say to that is that people should have the right to choose. If a person would like to wear a mask, they can wear a mask, but forcing a person to wear a mask that doesn't protect them against the virus and potentially can have adverse effects on their health in other ways is wrong. Why was taking away a person's freedom to choose became a common discussion? I feel deeply for any person who has been affected by this virus, contrary to many opinions of non-mask wearers. My heart is no different to the suffering of others. And with that, I just ask, how many people have contracted this virus who wore a mask? I'm tired of our country being invaded. It saddens me to see us this way. So I'll provide now to not mask a mandate. I request my comms friend to poke a burka special as we may, I'm going to say in a great teeth. Shelley I.D. I feel like a mask mandate is a severe violation of our rights. This is not something that should be pushed on us. Something that severely affects our health should be our choice. Those of you that want to wear them, that is fine, but please do not push it on others, on those of us that choose to not live here. I feel the mask itself is incredibly unhealthy and I would rather not wear one. Please do not make us a mandate of ignorance. Shelley I.D. And then the additional page from her is an additional email where she received a link from the store. Amy Jacobs. I actively oppose a mask mandate as it infringes on my constitutional rights, my body and my choice. Correct? That I go to... If this is a force to wear a mask, I will take my business elsewhere. Also, from what I see in Anchorage, the mask mandate is not making one bit of difference. I feel it's not healthy for me and my children to be breathing in our own CO2. If this virus is so contagious, why haven't we in our family got it yet? My husband and daughter and I have not worn our mask from the very beginning. My kids, on the other hand, have been forced to wear masks at school, which I have no control of, control unfortunately. Thanks for listening. Amy Jacobs. Rachel James. City council members and residents of Palmer, I was very excited when I found out that this mandate was being considered. I'm a mom of four and have multiple friends and family that are inside of Palmer, as well as myself. And I was a heated time in the United States when many leaders were passing unconstitutional orders and laws that seemed to be under the guise of the creator good. Please, I implore you not to do this. Here's why. The Centers for Disease Control report released in September shows that masks and face masks are not effective in preventing the spread of COVID-19, even for those people who consistently wear them. A study conducted in the United States in July found that when they compared 154 case patients who tested positive for COVID-19 to a controlled group of 160 participants from healthcare facilities, who were systematic, symptomatic, tested negative, over 70% of the case patients were contaminated with the virus and felt ill despite always wearing a mask. And then she included a link for the article from the CDC. The case for masks could be considered smart, if in fact they were effective in stopping this virus. Despite multiple states having mask mandates in effect for months now, they have it seems to have a spread of COVID-19. Case in point is Anchorage. For months now, it has had a mask mandate and yet the numbers have continued to rise. Also to consider is the fact that most people do not know how to wear a mask right away. I see mask wearers constantly touching their face and adjusting their mask. How could this possibly help stop the spread? Every time you touch your mask, you chance for germs to your hands. How effective are they really? Most important, why are you considering a mask mandate eight months after the pandemic has started? Palmer residents should have the right to choose for themselves. We have the right to wear masks as well as the right not to. I call you to let your citizens decide, but you don't to not violate our rights. Thank you. Rachel James. Sarah Jasper. Mayor Dupree, I'm glad we are given the opportunity to voice our opinions on the mask mandate that the city is considering. The voice of the people is one of the foundational ideals of this nation. And I'm truly thankful that you are allowing us to practice the sacred trust. When I heard the mask mandate, my first reaction was to think of the mental and physical health of people like myself. I have chronic illness, asthma, and also PTSD from a past, from a past abuse of relationships. Wearing a mask not only makes it difficult physically for me to breathe and it also has a component that is difficult for those who have not lived through it, a specific type of trauma to understand. This is not an easy aspect to write about and I can feel myself shaking as I type. My first question would be, what kind of accommodation would be made for people such as myself? If this mandate does not confection or accommodation, you are, in essence, telling me, you don't mind me, that we do not matter, that we have no place in your society. I find that not only disturbing but also un-American. It also brings me to my next question. Does this affect what I have done on the side of founding fathers, essentially my right to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness? I can imagine that some are smiling at this point in the moment in their eyes. But I think that we need to really consider this. I woke me to be drawn a line. I'm a firm believer based on past experience that if you give a person an inch, they will take a mile. And I'm even firmly believe in saying this when it comes to government. Now, you are in a unique position to allow people to practice personal liberty. I have no issue with individual businesses requiring masks. That is the right and one my family is taught to preserve. The right of liberty within the confines of the law. However, I humbly ask that you take into consideration all the people who work, shop, and visit your town. Please let us know that we do count, we do matter, and that our liberty will be reserved and protected. Sincerely, Sarah Jasper. Cory Jelison. Jelison. Concerned, I have been a Palmer resident, pay taxes, borrow before, seniors. I live here because of the beauty and the preservation of our rights. Please don't fret, Cory Jelison. Jeanette Jenkins. City clerk, please read this into the record. Jeanette Jenkins. I do not support a mask mandate. We are not in a state of emergency and life must go on. Neither people must be free to choose for ourselves nor this best as individuals. Governments are not instituted to govern every aspect of our lives. This has gone on far too long, but here in Palmer we have done well to the side. And when you look around in public, some choose to wear masks and others don't. No one is complaining. We are not Anchorage. If you want these direct immune measures, go live in Anchorage. Businesses have been suffering a lot this year and the governor wanting to put the burden on them to turn a full way from spending money in their establishments due to mask requirements and determine who should wear masks. There are many reasons why people may choose to not wear masks, but that should get to the individual to not have to explain to you what the root issues are or why they choose not to. There is a loss of this for these kinds of things. There's already too much overreach to government. Don't add to it. Do not mandate mask requirements. Thank you. Jeanette Jenkins. Annette and Johnny Johnson. I am very much opposed to a COVID ordinance, 2016, bound for face masks. I feel that the city council is both stepping this down and mandating that a person will be required to wear a face mask or without matter any item or object within the city. Maybe mandate a tattoo on each of us before entering the city Palmer, 666. But that too, I know this is a dead mandate, but America is still a free country. The governor has asked people to wear masks, but asks and mandates are two different things. This pandemic has hurt many small businesses in this country, state, and our city. I have for one tried to visit and buy for local, small Palmer businesses since this mess start to try and support them and to help them improve. But I will draw the line with this one. If the city council approves this ordinance, I will not shop within the city Palmer until I dance. An example is the municipality of Anchorage. Their restaurants and schools are shut down and have been for months. Are their numbers decreasing? Nope. 580 new cases in Anchorage, 1116, 2020. That Berkowitz mandate has not changed the back. The cases are increasing. It's going to happen, mask or no mask, mandate or no mandate. If a person is health compromised, they may, they have many options to protect themselves. The stores are often pickup, curbside service, click and pick. These businesses are a big number backwards. The same businesses have worked their boats off making the city park and economics while this is forced, but businesses are closing. Sadly, and you're working to increase those numbers. I personally decided I wear a mask based on each business's preference. They are the owners and they have the right to refuse service business by businesses. I had the choice to not shop there. That's my free choice and theirs. I respect their decision to make that decision. I don't tell someone that they should wear, they should or shouldn't wear masks. It is up to them. My business is my business. If I choose to wear or not wear, it's up to me. I also cannot believe that you may be able to enforce a rule such as this. What are you going to do? Take me to jail? You may fine? I have no problem paying the lawyer to fight for my civil rights. Maybe I have a medical reason for not wearing one. You going to ask what that medical reason is? Is that a hit or five issue? I think so. I will leave this in peace, opposed of your power, Palmer's accountable, strongly opposed to this request. Thank you. Jeanette and Johnny Johnson. Jeanette Johnson. Hello, Mayor Dupree, I'm on the city council. I live outside Palmer's in the middle of the city coast of my shopping in Palmer. I am very much against the mask mandate for our new business and will make every effort to take my business elsewhere. If you oppose such a mandate, please do your decision testimony to public record. Jeanette Johnson. Jason Johnson. I oppose the proposed ordinance requiring masks to be worn in the city of Palmer and not forcing businesses to require them. This is, this is government overreach and takes the rights and freedoms of the citizens and businesses away. This will also affect my decision. My decision should be to use St. Palmer. Thank you for your time. I pray you make the right decision. Jason Johnson. L.J. Johnson and Dave Grove. The proposed mask mandate by Councilwoman Serena Combs is, in my opinion, nothing more than the government control. We are eight months into this virus. The people of Alaska have more than complied with social distancing masks due to really work to the point of losing jobs and livelihoods. Our charming town of Palmer is composed of small businesses, owners, and that's what makes us unique. Punishing businesses by forcing them to mandate masks is an assault on people to know how to do the right thing. We expect people to stay home if they are sick or test positive for COVID. I believe very sincerely on that. If there is a sign on the door by a store owner saying masks are required, then the choice is ours. It's called respect. Each and every store or business has a right to determine their level of comfort in dealing with this virus. Not your right to oppose your, your crummy beliefs on others. Sincerely. L.J. Johnson and Dave Grove. Randy Johnson. I am strongly against a mandate for wearing a mask in Palmer. Palmer is better than that and I agree this is important. While I will wear one in close quarters with others and understand the need for, need at medical facilities, etc., I do not want or believe in a mandate in Palmer. Thank you. Randy Johnson. Rick Johnson. Hello, my name is Rick and I work at a business in the city of Palmer. I do not support the mask mandate before the city council today. My businesses require, does require masks, does require people to wear masks and most people do. I don't have the staff to mandate people to wear masks and I do not shame people. In this environment, businesses are struggling and it's hard enough to survive without the usual local events we used to have in town and the tourists. I am not going to force shame or tell people to wear masks. People are the ones who can make their own choices. But I find I get bad results when I ask people nicely to do something rather than tell them that they have to. I've already heard of some of my customers say that if this mandate passes, they will be shopping at Treehorns or other facility establishments. Please don't force people to do things. Please do not wreck away business. Ask them nicely and try and make it Palmer a more friendly place instead of a warm shirt to wear. Please read my statement. So right here because I will be at work this evening. Thank you for your time. The next one is from Leah Jones. But you're not reading this one, so she has already spoken to a person, Jeanette Johnson. Jolene Jorgensen. Dear city council, I would fight this right to the record that I was justified in giving the proposal to mandate masks wearing in Palmer. I totally respect people choosing to wear masks or not, but the fact of the matter is that I disagree with your choice. We have amazing options for shopping online and having curbside pickup. However, these options keep being directed at non-mask wearers. But obviously, the non-mask wearers are the ones, are not the ones worried about coming out public. Those that do not want to go anywhere without a mask should be allowed to utilize these wonderful options like curbside pickup. I personally feel like mask wearing is not helpful to those with no symptoms. I appreciate their wearing a mask if they feel like they had a cough and had, and absolutely had to come into public. But we should try to wear masks, stay at home and rest if we have symptoms. But if we have no symptoms, then it's difficult for me to keep in the Palmer six, six kids, always having them full of clean masks and have them not public. Then I'm trying to scramble, then I'm trying to scramble, grab masks, then move on and throw them out into my personal store in the car. So I'm literally putting a peachy dish on my kid's face just to be able to go to the store and let her take part in that. Even when I do have all my masks clean or the stores have clean masks, what ends up happening? My kids end up touching their face 100 times more than they would have without the mask. I personally get light-headed. My plea would be to stay at home and wear a mask if you feel safer. Wash your hands, wash your hands regularly. But do not make the majority do something that maybe possibly be more harmful to our health. Thanks. She also sent an additional email. I also like to have a record to record that there has been a claim that we would all welcome down our masks to hail our health, healthcare workers and police officers. So there are enough workers being on staff. I love our healthcare workers and police officers, but they are understaffed because of the contact tracing. For example, my daughter was playing basketball for Palmer Junior Middle School. When a girl found out she was positive of COVID, the whole team was shut down for two weeks. No one else ever experienced any symptoms, only to come back after two weeks, practice for two days, and then the governor gave his verdict where the cause in the district should shut down all, all after school two days. Her season is over. Never getting that much support at all. You are making people stop working, playing, and learning even when they are healthy. That's why we're under staff. Does this sound like it? Jennifer Kayler. No on the mask mandate. As you can't force everyone to wear masks properly without gaps, we see this all over Alaska, not just in the Palmer area. People do not go with their nose in their mouth properly with their mask without touching their face in and around and under the mask during their day. Until we can teach them how to wash their mask every day, like they put on a new clean underwear every day or change to a new mask right after coughing or sneezing on them, until then, the mask will not do the purpose it's supposed to. Here's an example of a picture of somebody in an establishment not using their mask properly and spreading more germs that possibly spread COVID-19 to others. This is how people wear masks and then had, and then had to go mask to wear with their bare dirty hands after them touching their face and people no gloves or disinfectant. They wanted to touch your face a heck of a lot more on something on it than something, than if something wasn't on your face. Here's a picture of me that walk out of the street. You're supposed to be wearing a mask properly, not attached picture, shown dated, remember 13.20. At 4:30 in the downtown, she saved her hair and she passed the picture that she took. Tim Keller. Or she'd say, I, James T. Keller, and am writing in opposition to Palmer's city, Palmer's special city council meeting and the Palmer's deputy mayor for posting a mask mandate for Palmer. While I don't oppose the wearing of masks, I find it very unacceptable that the deputy mayor is trying to use whatever power she thinks she and the city council have to force people to wear masks. The CDC recommends the wearing of face covering. They don't say at all that it should be mandatory whatsoever. Again, I don't oppose the wearing of masks in public, but I do oppose they think you can force the wear. Anchorage has been a mandatory mask-wearing city for a long now and their cases have skyrocketed. Palmer has not been a mandatory mask wearer and our cases are low. Why do you think that this is? Please do not overstep our clear bounds and attempt to make mandatory. You are making a mockery of yourself, city council and the city client. Thank you, James T. Keller. David and Catherine Keller. Palmer's city council, please do not implement the mask mandate in Palmer. If this is implemented, I will elsewhere to support businesses where masks are not mandatory and avoid doing business in Palmer whenever possible. Personal liberation not be constrained. People should be free to choose. Consider it, David. Kimmy O. Kevin. I have been a resident of the Palmer community for 12 years. I vote against the mask mandate. Wearing a mask should be choice, a choice made through educating people, educating people based on facts and not fear. Even if a mandate is passed, the city has no legal action that they can take upon an individual that does not, that does not or cannot wear a mask. I foresee a mask mandate putting additional pressure on Palmer businesses to stay open and in turn hurting the livelihoods of even more people within our community. Kimmy O. Kevin. Stephen Kevin. Hello, Palmer's city council. I do not typically get involved in matters unless they are getting close to home. This one is, I grew up in Palmer. I have worked at Palmer. I grew up at Palmer, Graysville. My background is not only as a contractor, but I have former Alaska State Trooper for 12 and a half years and 12 years previous in another state. I retired from the troopers in 2017, to which I served as investigator in the statewide major crime unit as well. As the last two years in Palmer at the detachment working primarily on major crimes and homicide. I'm also graduate of the National Forensic Academy in 2013. So as a first-class contractor and as an individual who supports your state laws, federal constitutional laws, it is with heavy heart that I even have to chime in on this issue. With that, as a current contractor, I think of Palmer for supplies, parts, groceries, and many, many other everyday things for my business and personal life. If you implement such unconstitutional orders, I will cease to come to Palmer. I do not have to come to Palmer for parts or issue to maintain my company or purchase parts. It challenges me to trying to detain me for not wearing a mask. If in fact you tend to detain the seeds of person for this, the officer, knowing this is an illegal seizure, is liable and will succeed. And regardless of who you are, you are now committing a federal crime and may then be detained by any citizen who has the right to minimize you for knowingly committing such a crime. First of all, this, city council has absolutely no business training me to take something that is unconstitutional. For you to tell me that I have to wear a public in an outdoor environment is ludicrous. In fact, if you tend to detain me for such a reason, you have violated, you have just violated my fourth amendment rights to un, unoffensive seizure. If you tell me that I can't, I'm so tired of it today. If you think that wearing a mask everyone is, in any way, you have the chances of catching, so you have to arrest him. If you think that wearing a mask everyone is, in any way, you have the chances of catching, so you have to arrest that person. Our nation's medical community have, have even discussed the greatness of this issue. Something made mask offered false sense of protection and security. I knew about the truth, not the basis of what you, the city council thinks. Our highest state government is not issued with equal to issues such as this, and it has prior, has far greater resources than the Palmer City Council. The CDC has seen masks don't make a difference. What makes you think you know more? I have the right to go where I want without government interference. If I choose as an individual to enter a store that serves a community without a mask, that is my God given right as a community. I mean, you, somebody who knows what they are doing to tell me where I am and I need to wear a mask. But a whole factual that only masks and dust masks do not offer any protection against the COVID virus. That is why the end of the entire mask. Beth Kincaid. Palmer City Council members, can you please have this written to the record? To record the public comment section of the post-mask mandate for the city of Palmer. It has come to our attention that some of your members are proposing a mandatory face mask ordinance for all residents and visitors to the city of Palmer. This seems like a gross overreaction to go to make two cases in the map to value. We are opposed to individual people taking their personal responsibilities into consideration in the mitigation of the virus. Further, we are not opposed to private businesses making decisions that are, that are rightfully clientele. What we are against is the one price fits all edit from a centralized government body. It is impossible for your ordinance to, to take into account public opinion, basic freedom of choice, recovered ability to patients that are at much lower risk of spreading infection, infections. Extending eighteen circumstances in personal life are considering what is best for the local businesses. You were elected to partially perform your duties. This does not include causing division in our community by unfortunate political motivation or immunity that this ordinance is misguided at its best. If you are truly concerned for that, for the vulnerable in our community, you should be encouraging them to quarantine themselves and take personal responsibility. No one is disputing that those who are models should wear masks and be careful. Of course, the best Kincaid. Janet Kincaid.
She testified.
Yeah, she testified in person. Marty Kincaid. Dear City of Palmer Mayor, Deputy Mayor of City Council Members. Although I'm a resident in Southside in the city of this, Palmer has been my hometown since 1960. I chose to live here and do not want to become another retard. I strongly oppose the proposed ordinance number 20J016. The social and economic effect on additional COVID-19 mandates is too much for a limited population base to support. Remember, we have a choice of over $100 outside of anything on it. What happens to the city's budget when the city's sales taxes diminishes and/or local businesses are forced to lock employees or close doors? COVID-19 is a virus and will not be eradicated. The research has not worn this emergency mandate. Then the states that have stayed open, one other COVID-19 deaths per 100,000 people. Look at Alaska's statistics, approximately 100 deaths per 731,000 Alaskans. That's point 0001368 or point 01368%. I have attached the great Maryton Declaration, which emphasizes focused protection, that those have compromised symptoms to protect themselves. Do not shut down masks to protect the view. The psychological and economical effects of the COVID-19 restriction will be felt for decades. According to the direct force of fear, I also have attached an article from the Alaska Watchman Board of Management perspective. Case in point, while I was preparing my testimony and now with a full rest container on, was asking for a pack of cigarettes. Do you research, do not enact laws in Palmer based on what you're doing? Please incorporate this email with the two attachments. As part of the fix for this emergency ordinance number 20J016, Nikki Martin Kincaid. Molly Kincaid. Dear Palmer City Council, I was born and raised in Palmer and have grown up in this community and the family, neighborly nature of those who are in it. It's because of the strong community that I've chosen to remain in Palmer and raise my son here. Lately, I have felt something in this community that I've never felt before, and it's various happening to me. There is a massive amount of fear that is spread throughout the world currently, and I see it turning into a difference of opinion between two neighbors and two a lot about it. We all have a difference of opinion, and one of the wonderful qualities of Palmer is that for the last thirty years, it has been a place where I know that no matter our difference in opinion, we will always accept each other and let each other live how we please. With kindness, grace, and that community spirit that works together, we're all good. I personally have an opinion like many of my neighbors that when it comes to COVID-19, wearing a face covering is not a viable solution. I have seen no convincing data that shows wearing a face covering has prevented anyone from being COVID-19. I have seen data, however, that shows the health risks of wearing face covering continually. My opinion is that everyone should be taking vitamin D and getting proper nutrition, exercise, and rest. Because of my opinion and the fact that this back-up research has, has a viable solution. Should I demand that those are choosing cheap junk food and not take that, I must not be allowed to go to a shop and participate in tournaments until you comply with my solution? How would this be indifferent to not around those who choose not to wear their face covering to participate in things like our upcoming Colony Christmas celebration? This town has had quite the summer with things like Colony Days in the State Attorney Council. We have adapted and done the best we can. I am proud of what Palmer has made of this year, and we are months and months into this pandemic, and we now know what to expect to handle the situation, each in our own individual ways. While the number of positive test results are high as of late, we still continue to have true levels of hospitalizations in there. Each business in Palmer has created, modified, and perfected their individual response to this pandemic and have made their own model to work for them. Now the businesses in the Palmer, them people of Palmer. The governor of Alaska has recognized that Alaskans are choosing to combat this pandemic, each in their own independent manner. And while encouraging Alaska to consider his solution for this pandemic, please continue to give the option to choose. I urge you to please follow our governor's direction and continue to let Palmer handle this pandemic together. We're also individually respecting our right to choose and have our own individual opinion in the way of living. Thank you very much for your time. Respectfully, Molly Kincaid. Benjamin Keen. Dear Palmer City Council, I understand that Palmer is considering a mask mandate. Personally, I do not think having a mandatory mask mandate is wise for several reasons. First of all, ain't the chess mandatory mask mandate? The people did not respond well. They felt depressed and frustrated with the choice of the mayor and the city council. I do believe that Palmer residents, including myself, will understand the overreaching and stepping on our constitutional liberties. Second, many businesses already have masks or are in a crowded guidelines in place. These businesses posted a mask instruction on the door and politely asked us that we could insert policies to get these instructions. However, there are also businesses who don't have mask instructions for the patrons. This is the freeing, helpful way to serve the community, those businesses who want to have mask guidelines to, and those who don't, don't. This is working from home, and there's no need to change it. Third, this will negatively impact businesses. I live in the city of Palmer and do most of my shopping in the city of Palmer. If this mandate takes effect, I will likely continue large portions of my business outside of Palmer. Many others will likely do the same. I do believe that by forcing business owners to ensure compliance, many who do not currently wear masks are putting in unnecessary lasting tension between customers and staff, businesses. This is a small town that many of us know one another. As an example, I forgot my mask when I asked to leave Baguio and lose my staff for years. It has unneeded stress upon our relationship. I do not believe that you will be dividing the very community. I do believe that you will be dividing the very community you are attempting to serve. Fourth, you are concerned about community health crisis. We should be reasonably careful with COVID. However, we should not be below a fear about, as of November 14th, the entire masku order of 108,300 people had just 17 hospitalizations with COVID symptoms. That amounts to point zero of the population. This disease is not overwhelming our healthcare system. Furthermore, as of November 17th, the borough had, has had 2,346 cases. That is 2.2% of the population. This COVID crisis is not overwhelming Palmer, nor is it overwhelming the masku order. Fourth, your threat of using force, force will prove to be counterproductive. According to your proposed mandate, the city deserves the right to use all available enforcement options to ensure compliance. As the city council member, your job is to serve the people. Using force to enact your own desires among people is tyranny and still fearsome to hearts of people and result in the people not respecting ownership. You may be responsible for some unnecessary harm by your order, and as a city council member, I am sure their hearts are deserved of people. As a Palmer City resident myself, I believe that the mask mandate will not serve the people. I ask that you strongly consider these things.
Can we, can we pass it from the Palmer?
Yes.
I mean, like, oh, that's not really, it's, you have forty-five minutes there. Mrs. May, you're on call. Just standing up, but it's serving me. You want to switch? You're good, okay. Where's your mic? I have not seen anybody.
Jane Knight. To remain concerned, I am opposed to an interim mandate, especially when one after one in acreage. There is a reason I do not live acreage, and I do not go to shop any further businesses because I have a lung issue. A wearing mask exactly explains my shoes. Businesses in Palmer will suffer the same pain from many of us going elsewhere or ordering online. Businesses can decide for themselves if they want patrons to wear masks. And individuals can choose to not patronize the business if their mask is not required by that business. If you want to mandate it in city buildings, especially those where social distancing is not possible. Um, but just don't, but don't injure or kill local businesses. My other wish you is that the highest rates of COVID are on Alaska City to a mass rate of twenty-four percent. Is it causal or is this a significant? No one has made a statement, but it does seem, does seem logical that rates should be higher places without mask mandates. In short, there's no guarantee the mask mandate will work to stop the spread, and it will be harming as the city's mandate asks. Thank you very, yours sincerely, Jane Knight. Fields of John Francis Kicker.
You might just right there.
No, there he is right here. Right, he's on the back door. Yeah, we're in the back of the, back of the, yeah. Thank you. John Francis Francis Kicker. Sorry about that, probably better. I was angry about this yesterday. After reading my statement, my anger was very obvious. Anyway, I would like to say I'm very much against any citywide face covering mandate. I think this comes would most definitely be overstepping the boundaries of our legislative power, all in the name of being more like acreage. Therefore, I announce that the problems that have been encountered while wearing a mask outweighs the ever so slight protection it may give you. The technical side of her mandate are too complicated to list. It is not well thought out. There will be many people like me that are not willing to comply with social government overreaching tactics. Yet the business needs to enact a dress code, including the face covering, so we have, I will not support that business. Pretty simple. There is no evidence these rinky-dink, cutesy-floss masks are no more than a way to hide or signal how hurtful you are. You want to protect yourself, wear a mask if that makes you feel better. I won't laugh, but do not think for one second that anyone within Palmer City government knows how to keep you healthy better than I. In closing, take some time and do some reading. N-I-O-S-H, that's pretty much they don't play English. Take from someone who's had many occasions in the past forty-five years of actually working with gases, chemicals, and smoke to have to wear respirating equipment. I know what works and what doesn't. Don't let your fear motivate you to make decisions for the rest of the week. Thank you, John Francis Kicker. Mercy Colbert. If individual businesses want to request masks in the facilities for their own reasons, let them exercise their right to do so. We must not, however, enforce a universal mask mandate and the guise of population protection. So whatever you will about the fact that this other mask is against this virus, but the science holds it can will to the psychological worker behind it. Mask mandates have done more damage to our country than did. I do not believe civilians who choose to wear masks are sheepish. I do not believe those who choose not to wear one are selfish. I do believe we are engaged in a psychological war with so many angels in this country we have. We have lost a sense of reality and truth. As a result, nobody trusts our public media sources, nor do much faith in our representatives and the entire democratic process right now. We have even taken this opportunity to wage a war on medical professionals and protective forces. We did not involve through this, involve us through this. Enough is enough. The numbers do not justify the radical response we continue to see on our televisions. We have an increase in cases, not an increase in sick people. On top of that, we actually have treatments for this disease, and they are being used with great success around the world. Unfortunately, these treatment, these treatments have become highly little, little size. And even since they're fully safe for inner medical workers, should they even refer to these lifesaving medicines? What do we focus on instead? Masks and tackling those who choose to not wear them. We need to be a focused protection plan for, we need a focused protection plan for a more vulnerable population that falls in line with efforts from the Great Bear Declaration, which has been signed back by nearly 35,000 medical doctors from around the world and sponsors this virus. The basic concept, concept of the GB Declaration is to push for our community, which is achieved by many angels, but does not include further lockdowns and masks for all. Our urge are the council to help Palmer take a stand against a mask mandate. I get that we all are a small town with a lot of fear right now, that we could trigger the ripple effect of the need in this state and this country. Let us be a voice of reason. A small town that stands for two, and logic over fear, fear and vengeance. And then shoot this to her references with the Great Bear Declaration. Thank you for your time, Mercy Colbert. Melinda Kolbisky. Please read to the record. I do not support the mandatory mask mandate. I find that there to be conflicting studies regarding the effectiveness of cloth or paper masks. Businesses of Palmer should be able to make their own arrangements regarding mask-wearing if they believe it necessary in their establishment. I wear masks in public, but in my personal decision, I find a mask mandate to be overreaching government control and one which certainly is not to encourage. I feel a special mandate in Palmer will send a negative message to the local or small businesses. One call, see Palmer resident. Donald Coates. Hello, my name is Donald Coates and I'm a resident patron of Palmer. I believe that the proposed Palmer mask mandate is detrimental to the city of Palmer and the businesses that will be forced to abide by these rules. This is not the role of government. If a business must do, part of the mask, they should be able to do so, but not be required by the city of Palmer. There is absolutely no support for a recent proposed this mandate. It does not work, it is not the role of government and more than businesses in our town. If this gets passed, one will stop. While we find that identified, possibly impressive, since this is a much more stereotypical year, will you guys require that every, require this every flu season? This proposed mandate is ridiculous and sad that it is even something they're discussing right now. I personally will try and avoid the city of Palmer to see the path. Thank you, Donald. Stephanie Coates. My name is Stephanie, I'm a resident and patron of Palmer and many other businesses. I am absolutely against the government mandate mask requirement. This proposal is no more than another reach for more governmental power. Leave it to each individual to live the way they see fit and protect their own health how they see fit. Leave it to business owners to conduct the business as they want. We all see the habit, the state manager link has on acreage. I just can't believe it's even been thrown out and then I go like hell. I think that this small minority of Palmer residents are capable of power because we need to provide a free passage. Therefore, the majority of the town has to leave their constitutional rights and been to that fear. The reasoning behind wearing masks is based on lies and inaccess, and the lies continue to be spreading or to gain power over the people. However, if you feel the need to wear a mask or stay at home, by all means, go ahead. It is your choice and right. The job that I'm a constitutional right is under the veil of state team when this virus is so major, it's not proportion. Providing businesses and businesses owners to refusing, to refuse scientists and services to an unmasked person is so unbelievably wrong. This mandate will certainly affect Palmer businesses and economy as many people take their money and business elsewhere. This has already been a very difficult year for businesses in Palmer. Donate ten housebooks. Thank you, Stephanie Coates. Thank you, Stephanie Coetz. Hazel Koppenberg. This is an official protest to proposed ordinance twenty dot zero sixteen. My concerns, one, this ordinance seems to be designed to further shrivel Palmer's economy. Two, there are no proven health benefits or negatives. I want to have this protest written to the record. Palmer, why do you want to shut down one of the few lights in that state? Maria Krebs. I am writing in regards to the proposed mask mandate in Palmer. As someone who works for a small business in Palmer, I do not feel comfortable having to force patrons to wear masks. Whether they work or not, or not, is not the issue. Putting employees in a position where they have to be under force or face a fine is absolutely ridiculous and would hurt small businesses. I would like to point out that her perspective seems to bring home a regular basis analyzing small business, place of business without a mask. It is quite clear that she does not leave a mask or social distancing for herself as she frequents my place of business regularly and not once has she worn a mask there and not once she has made effort to socially distance herself away from the other patrons. If masks are truly for our health and not about compliance, then I would think these people have such as herself would set an example. When I saw that she was behind this and I was, I, this, I was outraged, not because I don't want to wear masks, because I am required to wear one at work regardless. It's the hypocrisy of her pushing this mandate will not do it herself that is outrageous. I hope that you take this into consideration. Thank you. Patrick Kreuzel. Hello, Congress City Council. I don't live in Palmer, but I was born here. Growing up, I spent most of my time here and worked on a small farm. I currently work at a small business and have grown for four years right here in Palmer. If you guys implement unconstitutional ordinance of twenty dot zero sixteen, I will cease shopping here and take my money elsewhere. If there is by chance, I need something here in Palmer, I will not comply with the mandate. Go with Madison, it's well in right of proportion, eight percent of some, if not the highest numbers in the state and has had a mask mandate for months. Please do not do this in Palmer. Patrick Kreuzel. Holly Kuhn. Palmer City Council, please do not implement the mask mandate in Palmer. If this is implemented, I will request for it to support businesses where masks are not mandatory and avoiding business in Palmer whenever possible. Sincerely, Holly Kuhn. Mike Cruz. Good morning. I am strongly, I am writing strongly your city policy to reject the proposed mask mandate. Anchorage has been under some of the strictest masking and shutdown rules and has seen almost no effect of this virus. The authoritarian, authoritarian entirely, regulations implemented by Anchorage have done nothing except to shut down businesses and keep people living in fear. I am, as this is submitted, a testimony against the mandatory mask requirement. Two weeks of that concern has morphed into eight months of fear based on tyranny, based tyranny on American people, and now we have gone into a new level on which we can't live up, can't let up until we are safe with the vaccine. Despite this, mine is telling me that the flu vaccine is at best sixty percent effective. This mandate will not end in sixty days because of the fear of damage these policies create. Safety is everyone's responsibility, and we should not allow our government officials to put mandates in place that strip away the very idea of what makes America great, individual liberty. In addition, the healthcare system is not overrun and hasn't even gotten closed. Medical professionals are being laid off because there's no work. People are delaying treatments and healthcare, and the rise of ICU is due to increased domestic violence, drug overdose, suicide attempts, VHS, patient loads, and other COVID side effects. Babies in NICU are being prevented from seeing their mothers in Anchorage. People are formally dying with, with not, people are formally dying with, not necessarily of COVID. Each death is a tragedy, and if they were taken to soon, I doubt their families or God will appreciate you exploiting the past and future compliance of people. In addition, the Anchorage mask mandate does nothing to stop the spread of those smoking marijuana together and increasing the spread. Nothing amusements about this, as we team hot shops essential, but tonight people get right to peacefully assemble and practice their religion. Your role as an elected official is not to strip away the basic liberties endowed upon the people of God. Your role is to advise the people on how to keep safe. Your mandate states that you will have the right to use all available enforcement options to ensure compliance. Translation, the government now is empowered to identify and detain you should step out of line, helping restore unity. Will you keep listing, will you keep a list of all the noncompliant for future reference? If your recommendation is mask and the rest of the city is see that alone, so be it. In any business that would request a mask, be worn or not, should be, there is a right and apply to the agreement that you have to provide her to exchange to businesses as I see that, that to mandate compliance with the threat of force unconstitutional against the role of government, I suggest you take a step back, open your mind one side if you want to work here or to leave here and allow people to make the decision that best suits them, stop screening them, and leave. Thank you. Mike Cruz.
Want to talk?
Sure.
Okay, Hayley Kirk. Near City Palmer City Council, I am submitting my testimony today in opposition to proposed mask mandate that is being considered for City Palmer. As a business owner, I may, I help my clients with their accounting and tax matters and have seen firsthand how the government's proposed mandates have hurt the small business community. On its own, that may not be a compelling enough reason to avoid mandates if they are proven to provide safety for the greater population. However, at times, time has told that these mandates have created more problems than they have solved. We are now facing other threats that may bear out to be more deadly in COVID-19, not the least of which is depression and suicide now within our community members. Beyond that, mandatory mask policies further an environment of fear, just as a type of environment that promotes, not deters sickness and disease. Furthermore, mandates like the one being considered are gross violation of constitutional liberties and should be rejected on that basis alone. It is time to trust the people to take care of one another through kindness and personal responsibility and not mandate care from a government authority under threat of punishment. If this mask policy were to be passed, it drastically would fall out on our business community, and we, the people, will have lasting and detrimental effects. As a nation, we have weathered much worse storms of disease throughout our history and come out of them time and time again. Threat of COVID-19 will not be our undoing unless it unravels the liberties that our nation was founded on. It is too great of a risk and one that I strongly urge you to consider before taking vote on this proposal. Hayley Kirk. This is from Laura Larson. I work in shop within the city of Palmer. I currently voluntarily, I currently voluntarily wear a mask when entering a Palmer business. Any mask mandate in the city of Palmer that requires a smaller business to enforce it is detrimental to their business. Therefore, I'm against the mandate that force shoppers to wear masks. Carolyn Landborn, I urge the council to go down the mandatory mask wearing. Please leave it up to individual business owners. Thank you. This is from John Landborn. As a business owner in the city of Palmer, I strongly oppose the city dictating how I conduct my business, my customers. If I decide masks are necessary in my property, that is my business, not some government agency. I will not honor and order from you. City of Palmer does not have that authority. If you think you do, you are sadly mistaken. Go to the back and continue reading. Oh, please, no mask mandate. I strongly recommend the city council not institute a mask mandate order. This is from Michael Lampeter. Please do not implement the mask mandate in Palmer. It is very, if this is implemented, Palmer businesses will be hurt and suffer because of this mandate. I know the issue of masks is very important to some and not important to others who feel it's not scientifically proven and infringes upon rights of the individual. Anchorage has already tried this, as has many other states in the Northeast. It does not work and harms business. Instead of government getting involved and pushing for mandates, why doesn't the assembly and government officials push for letting businesses set their own policies? If Redmeier's and Cars or any other restaurant or business wishes to implement mask-wearing, let them do that. If customers refuse, the store and assembly refuse service or has sense of leave. If they don't, then that is trespassing, which is already the law. Implementing mandates do nothing but rile people up in these times. It seems about fifty percent support masks while the other half doesn't. These numbers are only a guess, but seem to be a right based on what I see at Redmeier's wearing masks and those who don't. And it seems to be growing as to who isn't wearing masks. I'm a firm believer that less government is better. Let the businesses implement their own policies and enforcement. That way, people can choose where they shop or don't. I also believe that if people are also scared of the virus, then stay home and wear masks. Those who aren't afraid are going to live their lives as we have since this started. Please do not pass this. I enjoy shopping and dining in Palmer, and if passed, I will stop going to Palmer. Please do not make Palmer like Anchorage. It didn't work there and it won't work here. Thank you for your time, Michael Lampeter. This is from John Olson. We are absolutely against this. No, 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 and no. We are respectful, keeping our distance, which is far more efficient and compromising our lungs with our own recycled CO2. This is from Levanna Grand. I'm against the mask mandate. They do not work, and I will not wear one. I live in a three-country and do not have the right, and you do not have the right to pose business and force us to mask. If you are sick, stay home. It is flu and cold season, no mask in Palmer. Scott Lee. In reference to EO twenty sixteen, I feel this mandate does nothing but impart further harm on businesses already struggling in today's COVID economy. I believe it should be up to the business owner and their customers whether or not they want to wear masks. I know, just as I am sure anyone at this meeting knows, many people who won't go into business if masks are required or not required. If you look at Anchorage and economic impacts your unconstitutional mandates have on just our food industry, you'll see this cannot be allowed to happen. It will create an economy dependent on government funds just for businesses and employees, just for businesses and employees to survive. Anchorage saw several percent increase in people drawing unemployment between March and June of twenty twenty because workers were simply not allowed to go to work. Remember, that all started as a fourteen-day effort to squash the curve, but because Anchorage was given power to mandate whatever they wanted from that point forward, it became much more than that. The staggering thing to take into account here is how many seasonal jobs there are usually in the summer. This usually makes us' unemployment rates decrease during the summer once the fishing, tourism, and construction sectors do ramp up for operations. Furthermore, this is just a tip of the iceberg, so to speak. If we allow unconstitutional ordinance in our great city of Palmer and throughout the nation, we will be willingly giving up our rights and consciously allowing government overreach, setting up a dangerous precedent moving forward. I believe each person should have their choice, business owners and customers alike. This is much bigger than the mask mandate, and we must fight to ensure our constitutional freedoms are preserved and that we do not become city-state burden dependent on government handles. Let's just skip, this is just about the mask mandate, and remember that this all started as a fourteen-day effort to squash the curve. Look at how it turned out for our friends and neighbors that's forty-five minutes south of Anchorage. I thank you for your time and wish you well yourselves and as well to all Palmer business owners, all the vested coming ones. Remember, we are Palmer strong. D. Scott D. Got it. Mandor. Okay. Levanna Grand. I am against the mask mandate. They do not work. I will not wear one. I live in a three-country and do not have the right to choose business, to both businesses have forced us to wear masks. If you are sick, stay home. No masks in Palmer. Let me read that next. Okay. Okay, you're welcome, Levanna. Okay. This is Amanda Leonard. I am aware that I even need to write, I am in awe that I even need to write a letter to express my opinion on issue of masks, but I guess of all the craziness in this world today, I guess that's to be expected. Palmer has always been an outside and hostile anchors, and Palmer has paid its own way in being unique. Why do we want to follow Anchorage, what Anchorage is doing? They have a mandate, a mask mandate since early fall, but their numbers keep going up. So why does their mask, why does the mandate really work? The answer is no. This is all about control. I have fought for my country and retired, and now if any mandates are put in place, I will exercise my right to not support business within Palmer. Do you think you can afford to lose revenue in Palmer? If people are in fear and have every reason to exercise their right to either wear a mask, online shop, or curbside pickup? If anyone's looking for an ad void, it should be looking into welding of people. Suicide rate has increased due to COVID. I don't see any fear of this. Maybe my goal is to reduce this. I will not live in fear of COVID. If my time, if it's my time to go, so be it. I will take precautions, but the government's telling us what we will and will not do is overstepping the boundaries of me being a free citizen. Ask that you do not agree with, I ask that you do not agree with making a mask mandatory. Amanda Leonard. Okay, and Caitlin LeVette. A bunch of OSHA guidelines. Here, okay. Department of Labor guidelines, National Medicine, California OSHA regulations, Department of Health. Um, neurosurgeon Dr. Blalock. Oh, articles. Okay. In closing, after at least one article, this is from Kathy LeVette. In closing, mask are useless against protecting people from virus. If anything, it's making more people sick. Test show that it is more likely for people that wear masks to have a propensity to get sick compared to those who breathe fresh air. Our bodies are made to fight for us, and they are a strong group that fresh air dilutes and minimizes the virus. Stop trying to muzzle us and let the people of Palmer make their own decision. I will use the phrase that liberals love to chant, "My body, my choice." Caitlin LeVette. Okay, this is from Scott Lewis. Dear Mayor and City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to address proposed mask mandate emergency number twenty sixteen. Since the founding of this country, our purpose of government, the true mandate of government, has protected the rights of citizens and ensured our freedom. It is not to be our job to keep us healthy or keep us safe. We, the citizens, deserve that right and responsibility for ourselves. We've all heard the ongoing mantra of all the science regarding COVID. Many aspects of science behind COVID are still widely debated. What new science do we follow? What science, what if science is flawed? Do we really have to follow this COVID science to the exclusion of the United States Constitution? Do we really need to follow COVID science to the exclusion of other science? What about the science of depression? What about the science of alcoholism or mental health issues for our children? What about the science of cancer and other diseases that are going undiagnosed and untreated because of COVID mandates? Do we just ignore all that science? While we follow the science behind COVID to the exclusion of everything else as consequences and is at best misguided in my optic and at worst hermatical. Oppenheimer followed science and we got the atomic bomb. The Nazis followed science and conducted horrible experiments on the Jews. So if the fall of science doesn't always have a good outcome, following the Constitution, however, always ensures our liberty. If we proceed with implementing the mask mandate, what comes next? Will lockdown mandates take next? Will the government decide who is essential and who is not? What will be the next after that? Forced vaccine vaccinations? What will come after that? Health passports? What would be the next step in this progression? Isolation camps for people who choose freedom rather than complying with tyrannical mandates? It seems unreal, but how else would such mandates be enforced? There are so many parallels through this girl history, and none of them have turned out well. We need to stop ourselves before we continue down this slippery slope. Many businesses in the valley are hanging on by a thread. A mask mandate in Anchorage has pushed customers, our shoppers, to the mandate through the valley, and this has helped sustain businesses that are still open but continue struggling. Any mask mandate would drive people away from Palmer and would put the final nail in the coffin for many of these businesses. Do you want to be responsible for such a loss of business? What about the families and employees that would be seriously affected by the loss of income and or vacancy? In this country, we all have the right to life, liberty, and property. We all have the right to breathe fresh oxygen, and any heat that infringes upon us is a gross violation of our human rights. We have important decisions for you boiled down to the most simplistic terms. This is a decision between liberty and tyranny. The citizens of this town, your constituents, need freedom and ask you to do your job and protect your rights. Scott Lewis. Chantelle Litter. I'm a resident Palmer. I do the majority of my part of shopping locally, supporting small businesses. You know, the proposed mandate You know, the forced mandate, forced mask mandate issue, I will be taking my business to online competitors and I will not be giving it back to our community. If local businesses want, refuse service to people without masks, that's their choice and I will also choose not to patron their store. That's what businesses choose how they wish to handle their shops. To City Palmer, I'm a business owner in Palmer. Since the opening, reopening of Alaska and long before, I have managed my business responsibly with safety and wellbeing and my clientele, communities and staff effectively. I believe businesses should be entrusted with managing their own businesses. This mandate will have significant impact on my business as well as others in my community. The base of my business is community inclusiveness, kindness, compassion, and excellent professional service. Clients here leave here standing taller and not impressed and defeated. Our clients have been responsible for all of us in our business during this time. This mandate would require business owners to be enforcers of those mandates by physically removing people who do not comply. I will not put myself or my staff in that position. It creates hostility. This is, this is not the base of my business. Governor Dudley asks us to be responsible. Most people generally, genuine respect for businesses comply. If they don't want to wear masks as a business that's required, they won't shop at those businesses. They will go elsewhere. I and my staff do not want to lose income in support for my clientele and community. Clients are already saying they will not come to Palmer and that affects each one of us. I have purchased PPE recently, face shields that are close to the bottom. I am now reading that these will not be an option, yet cost masks will. It's inconsistent as a lot of mass information. It seems that this mandate is linked to social justice issues. This is not the same and should be separate. I appreciate reading my testimony. Cherry Lilly, owner of AK Lady Bar. From Rebecca Linsicum. I'm a longtime Valley resident and always claim Palmer's my hometown. I have gone out of my way to support local and small businesses here, even more so during this time of uncertainty. If this mask mandate is implemented, I will spend another penny in Palmer until it's effective. Choices ours as free citizens and a free society. I will not let my daughters be an endorsement of government out of overreach in my own backyard, but that, that will be my choice. I sincerely hope for the same for our liberties and you stand firm against this mandate. This is from Julie Pollard. To Palmer City Council, this meeting is assault on my liberties. If these proceedings go in the direction of mandating the use of masks everywhere in Palmer and regular, common people can gather, I will not shop Palmer. The loss of my businesses and that of many more individuals translate into a loss attached to revenue for City Palmer in addition to loss of revenues for small businesses in Palmer that are struggling now. We do not need to be controlled by a more government business. We should not be forced to act as police. I will not live in fear. This is from a concerned citizen, Rosie Loomis. In reference proposed emergency number 2016, I stand heartily opposed. This mandate would be to clear reach of powers and responsibilities of City Council. Your jobs are to tend to city business and not govern its citizens. Please do not make the same mistake as Anchorage Council as it surely have lasting repercussions. Please continue to allow businesses to make these decisions themselves. It certainly offend their rights and not yours. I know the majority of Palmer citizens will not stand for this tyranny. I request that this be read into the record for Wednesday, Council meeting. This is from L. Lousberg. I have disease of my lung. It affects me using masks. I refuse the mask mandate. It is not a law and you can't enforce it. I request my comments be read in public records, special council meeting, Wednesday, November 18. This is from Juanita Lawyer. This is very concerning to me. I have a four-year-old autistic grandson that is non-verbal and has sensory issues. There is no way we will be able to make him wear a face mask. So he will not be able to come to town at all. I have an elderly father with breathing issues. He will also not be able to come to Palmer, so all the shopping will be done in Wasilla. I will also not be shopping in Palmer and not be doing my Christmas shopping and be doing all my Christmas shopping in Wasilla. I myself wear my face mask, but there are people who cannot for a number of reasons. So for more personal others, I don't think anyone has the right to try and force an agenda just because they are power hungry. We do not live in Anchorage, we live in Palmer. There is a reason we live in Palmer. If you want to live, if you want Anchorage rules, then make 40 miles drive yourself. I hope it's realized that if the mandate goes through, it will hurt everyone in this small business in Palmer. It is not just myself and my family that is saying, if this goes through, they will not be shopping in Palmer. This is from Juanita Lawyer. Good afternoon, just want to address a proposition of mask mandate that is discussed at tonight's meeting. I feel like citizens of Palmer should be able to decide for themselves on the mask mandate. Our numbers here in the valley do not constitute a mask mandate. After all, they don't seem to be working for Anchorage. I think we'll just, do just find out. From Dean and Darlene Lust. Palmer City Council, what is the matter with you? Please do not implement the mask mandate in Palmer. If it is implemented, I will give all sorts of support to businesses where masks are not mandated to avoid doing business in Palmer whenever possible. This is from Karen Mahoney. I implore you, do not mandate masks in the valley. We are not Anchorage. Chris Van Koolich. Anchorage with 288,000 people just had just under 13,000 cases of Corona with 60 deaths. That's 0.47% chance of death, not excluding any reasons in combination for ours for death. Matsu has 108,000 people and five deaths with 2,300 confirmed cases and that's a 0.21 chance of death. Anchorage has had a mask mandate in place while Matsu has not. Anchorage has done their very best to destroy small businesses, churches, schools, and financial wellbeing of all its citizens, while Matsu has allowed its citizens to make choices based on what they're putting in their family. You're almost six times more likely to test positive in Anchorage and if you do test positive, you are 10 times more likely to die from the virus. This does include deaths by suicide from losing everything, showing not being in school or people not having a social network to eat lunch with and discuss things on our lives. This does include the additional domestic and child abuse taking place in quarantine. This does not include the drug and alcohol abuse that's being taken place in quarantine. One city is doing what's right to protect their entire population during the outbreak and the other's doing anything it can to make it worse. Apples to apples, tell me I'm wrong. How are the mandates helping anyone? Please do what's right for all of us and keep us open for business without a mask mandate. Tyranny disguised as protection is still tyranny. If you are lucky to resent all of us, not to enforce your narrow view or agenda on us. Elections are not intended to be weapons to enforce compliance upon those lucky enough to not have a voice at the table. This is Anna Marquet. I am writing today in regard to the possible Palmer mask mandate, which I very strongly oppose. I would like to have this testimony read in the public record. I do not think that Palmer should take away the rights of citizens of Alaska. Well, I understand that your intention is to protect those with vulnerable health. It should not overwrite my personal freedoms. We are three nations with our rights should not be infringed upon. Palmer needs to allow people to make up their own minds, but not force their will upon the general population. If someone is of vulnerable health, they can take precautions. They need necessary protective selves, wear masks, order online for pickup or go shopping during the hours that Red Meyer, Walmart, other stores have in place for people with fit in category. For every one person that might fit in that category, you would make 200 healthy people bend to your will. If businesses don't want to serve or not do business with someone not wearing a mask, that would be up to them. They are the ones that should be making that choice. They have products and services they make income from, pay taxes and all the expenses it costs to running a business. But for a city to put a mandate forcing people in business today and overstepping the city's bounds? As it is, I have already not been able to shop at certain businesses because of this. If they don't want my money, that's fine. I cannot wear masks due to medical reasons. I have not been able to physically see my various doctors because they require masks. So now with my health issues, I haven't seen my doctors since February. How is that fair to me? Now, I won't be able to shop in wonderful little shops in Palmer because of your take on people wearing a mask. I want to give to community. I want to, I want to support local businesses this holiday season. We have all been struggling. 2020 has been a rough year, but the mandate goes in effect, we are all have to shop at chain stores that deliver and Amazon. I'm not the only person in this position. Where, where we have had to stop seeing doctors, stop going to certain businesses all because of the masks that even CDC admits are being a feel-good measure and actually not effective against COVID. Have you actually read the labels of the mask you're wearing? Have you checked to see if the mask you're wearing specifically protects you against COVID? The answer is probably no. I have yet to find a mask that hasn't had a disclaimer, does not protect against COVID. All the so-called masks, homemade medical crochet, neck gaiters, piece of cloth, bandanas, cloth masks sold in stores or anywhere else in the public wears, does absolutely nothing. Medical doctors have been making great strides in regard to COVID for treatments. They found numbers have been greatly inflated for deaths because of hospitals. We get more money from the government and now is very treatable because American doctors have been able to study. Even our own Congressman Don Young now has COVID, who fits all health risks or it being Chris Menjic. Anchorage. I read for that. Okay. Sorry, I had quick finishers. Too slow, okay. Rick Markey. I ask to have my testimony read into record. I oppose the City of Palmer mask mandate. I believe this infringes on the rights of American citizens. We should be able to choose what is best for our own personal health and not mandate it to us. Because then, when does it quit? I understand some people believe a mask will help, but one mask people are wearing actually protects against COVID-19. Every mask sold in these stores or homemade does absolutely nothing to stop COVID. In fact, the CDC has admitted that wearing a mask is a feel-good measure. I think the City of Palmer would be overstepping their bounds to mandate something that will take away one's freedom. If you don't implement this, a lot of stores will lose money this holiday season. People shop elsewhere instead. I know a lot of people who will not go to Palmer if you pass this mandate or are really willing to cripple small businesses around Palmer for the holiday shopping season, even though they already had such a tough year. You need to allow people to assess their own health on what they feel is best for them, not mandate thousands of people in Palmer community doing what you want them to do. That sounds a bit like a dictator to me. Everyone needs to have a choice on what they decide is best for them. You don't pay my salary, my taxes, my mortgage, my insurance or car payments, pay for my groceries or anything else that I spend money on. If you want to take care of all that for me, then maybe, then you could treat me like a child, being told what to do. But you do not tell me what or what not to wear. I'm an adult that is responsible for my own health. This is from Anna Larson. We, the people, do not need the government to tell us what to do concerning our health as if we are not capable of taking care of ourselves. We know the risk and some people wants us to wear masks, let them do so fine. But if someone doesn't want to wear a mask, let them be. We can take care of ourselves without mandates. We know the risk, we know statistics. Only 0.01% of Matsu area has been hospitalized because of COVID. America has had over 100 cases in COVID and we've survived. Let the people stay free, let them do what they want. It's their bodies, their choice. Let the people decide if they want to take the risk or they do not, or not. But do not force something down our throats that we don't want to swallow. COVID has brought a lot of fear, frustration, inconvenience to our lives already. We do not need more mandates. They have been worked and they never will. This is from Jim Veraya. Our freedom and liberties, my body, my choice. You may create a mask mandate, but I won't wear one. It's not a law. We don't need the government telling us to put a cloth on our face. That is pointless. If a Democratic doctor is telling you to work, then please seek other sources as well to get the facts, as there are many, many, many other doctors and scientists that say masks are pointless. So I encourage you to just seek a single doctor or source that that's your political viewpoint or narrative. Science does not prove masks work. Statistics do not show masks mandates work whatsoever. Take California example. Mandates and lockdowns haven't slowed the spread. 99% survival rate and we are killing the economy, causing more folks health problems from future wearing masks, breathing CO2, breathing bacteria, lung infections, discriminating against people who cannot wear masks for health, trauma, sensory, disability reasons. So they are allowed in place of business or fly or to work if they can. This is horrible. Let COVID-19 run its course. It's going too soon or later anyways. People at higher risk should take all precautions necessary. Healthy people ought to carry ones normal. I have a longtime customer that has hospitalized a lung infection. His doctor told him that if you're wearing a mask and stop wearing it, you're healthy. Impact on business. You are already struggling in Palmer and when, and when we turn to me, Anchorage, and still fear, we won't go out. Businesses need four-quarter sales. We'll never get through the drought of the first quarter of 2021. It's been tough as it is. My wife has a small business in Palmer that's down over 50%. That's a drastic loss of income for our family. Implementing a mask mandate will further decrease sales to small business as it has in Anchorage. I don't know about you, but I don't want to go to Anchorage because of a mask mandate. I have a couple times in my shop where I've tried to choose what I want to do with my own body. Around 164,000 businesses have closed according to help during COVID. Please don't help that number increase by implementing this. Palmer, we are better than this. Let the citizens decide for themselves how they live, work, and operate. It's our bodies, our health. We don't need the government dictating that. It's eerie going to Anchorage. All the masks, people won't look at you. No smiles, no connections. Small businesses are a ghost town. The boy was Costco packed in the parking lot on November Saturday. Mask mandates give the feeling of fear and hesitation. Don't try to create that in Palmer. We have been so relieved that we can live in the valley and not be controlled and everyone that we know feels the same. Many people have told us what relief it is to come to the valley and not wear masks. Don't kill Palmer business. We aren't Anchorage, we don't want to be. We live in the valley because it's not Anchorage. What has been done? That was too bad. Nicole Marsh. As a small business owner and Valley resident, I am relieved to live in the valley where we are not one like Anchorage. Sicken to me that the deputy mayor wants to make, take Palmer that about. Mask mandates don't work. Masks don't work. Studies of people will cause the results and 80% of them were masks. Cloth isn't stopping this forever slowing it. It's 99% survival rate, so why are we going to further the theater? Scare tactics narrative. Why are we going to make Palmer to where folks are scared to shop these small businesses that are already suffering? I have a business in Palmer, I'm down 50% income. A mask mandate that is pointless is not going to slow the spread, it's just going to kill business. These mandates show no proof of working, period. Look at Anchorage. Mask mandate has not stopped or slowed it. It's killed businesses though. Affected people's livelihoods, affected folks' mental health, future physical health because breathing your own CO2 and how acidic that makes your body, not to mention bacteria and lung infections. If you look at the graph enclosed from the Alaska Department of Health, mask mandate implemented by shows that lower numbers and the graph slowly climbs and now the graph shows high cases, all while mandate in place. Look at California, same thing. Lockdown mandates, it doesn't work. No scientific data backing it up. Healthy people do not need a mask, a doctor said. Those who are at risk, wear masks. Take precautions. Those that care for or are around people at risk, take care of things and be cautious or keep away exposed. A piece of cloth is not saving lives of our neighbors as some states. So if so, the graph I attached would look a lot different. And 80% plus that are positive, I read on one study, all wore masks about. Feet Palmer free. My body, my choice. I won't comply. We will then discriminate against people that can't wear masks during mandates and many that have sensory slash trauma, a shield is just as bad. They can't go in and shop or be free to do so. They are turned away or told, wear one. Many illnesses can't wear one. Different people with sensory issues, trauma, anxiety, panic attacks, though shield isn't for them either. Customer around my husband's work got lung infection and hospitalized. Doctors said for no mask wearing. He said, stop wearing a mask if you aren't sick. The media censors doctors that have scientific and common sense on this as it doesn't fit the narrative. You see it as a democratic narrative. There are so many doctors, virologists, nurses, ICU workers speaking out that are completely against mask mandates as it's not scientific and does not work. So whatever medical professionals that are helping you with this decision... So whatever medical professionals that are helping you with this decision, I broaden your horizons and send you. Okay, this is from Whitney Natter. City Palmer should not be placed under mask mandate. We are fortunate to live in a free society where individuals are able to make choices for themselves and do not require a select few government voices to rule them. If a business or entity chooses to require specific entire actions, others patrons should have the right to do so. Private groups should be responsible for how they choose to operate the facility that they own. These decisions should be enacted on an individual basis and not require government enforced by the government. Palmer is made up of many small independently owned businesses. These individuals work hard to support themselves and have decisions on a personal level in order to establish your livelihood. They are proudly part of a community that encourages small-town feel where a common person is able to have their voice heard and not be oppressed by commands from city administration. Regardless of the intentions of mask mandate, these actions are beyond control of city officials should have over residence. Power can easily be abused, quickly get out of hand, and if used irresponsibly can become harmful to society. We have seen this in neighboring areas where mandates are doing more harm than good to the community. This is from David Maxwell. The mask mandate serves only to help those who seek to control people through fear. I actually reconsidered this fear mongering and the considerate of solution-based answers. A vaccine is coming, but not here yet. But there are other things that can promote other than fear. Please take a look, the video for input can be preventative. We are not ignoring the fact that C-19 is serious, but at the same time, the other side should not ignore prevent, preventives that are proven to work. This whole subject has been political and because of that, being weaponized against the people. This is having some irreparable, irreparable consequences to our nation. And I may remind you, we're on this together. Consequences will affect everyone. This is Dave in New Orleans. Okay, this is from Diane Meyer. Pardon? Oh, actually, okay. Can't count too soon. Number one, it is never proven that masks prevent the virus. Number two, 70% of active COVID cases are for mask wearers. Number three, this is a violation of civil liberties. Number four, we then lie to and buy to by so-called medical professionals who give out one set of rules and do not give to themselves. Number five, we are diminishing our immune system. Number six, over 99% of cases recovered, many from not symptoms. Number seven, there will always be germs, we live in a fallen world. Living in a bubble is not living. I value my freedom and appreciate the freedom to make choices about my own body. Number eight, did I mention how many times the American people have been lied to? Number nine, who is benefiting financially from all these mask sales? Not saying this is true, but it would surprise me if legal figures are financially gaining on these sales. Number 10, if you feel safe wearing a mask, even if the proof is a prevent the virus, that the prevent the virus is not out there, wear one. But please allow me the same freedom not to wear one. 11, the lies, lies, lies that come from CDC, not to mention other authoritative services. Number 12, China imported more than 2 billion masks, no connection there. Number 13, I am a woman. I love breathing deeply in the fresh air and smelling flowers. Number 14, you're creating unnecessary fear and panic. Number 15, and then unanswered questions and lies. This is from David Mayer. Although I do not reside within the city of Palmer proper, but the Lacey Mountain area, we interact with the city's businesses, vendors on a daily basis. I hope that my input would be considered in long-term constituents. I'm 72 years old and have seen many things in my lifetime, including family members that have polio, tuberculosis, and all the childhood diseases since the 1950s when our homes were quarantined. Even when our parents were able to go to work and go up their daily business. Even AIDS allowed people to live normally and it was up to us to be protected from them. I have been a DMT and paramedic since 1984. We who were sick were, are the ones who are being quarantined. We don't put casts on people because they might slip on the ice and break a leg, nor do we make them stay in our homes. We don't pull people's feet because they might get cavities or restrict what they eat. SARS, MERS, and common cold are all forms of coronavirus, but there are no concerns about people getting them. Why would we restrict the freedoms of people who are not sick because of fears of some others? I'm not sure the validity of this information where fit. On the CDC site today, I see listed the total COVID cases since January 21, 2020 as 11,300,635. In cases in the last seven days as 1,129,790. That means that 10% of total cases in the US happened in one week of the total 43-week period. CDC also graphs, has graphs and there is to show of the 3 going, 128,187 tests done with only 10.5% tested positive. Oh no, we should panic, we all want to die. Oh, that's right, survival rate is 99.4%. I think people, I think that people who fear transmission of the virus, that Dr. Peltz said is unlikely the coronavirus will ever be eradicated, could take heart to dispose that, that mask work. Since masks work, they should wear them or quarantine themselves, not take away my freedom of choice to not wear them. I don't condemn them. Why do they insist they need to meet their standards? Why do I have to get up my pursuit of happiness not to struggle to breathe through a piece of cloth that cuts 95 micron-sized particles, but COVID particles are approximately point 125 microns? Please don't act as mandate, let us decide, this is civic liberty, not tyranny. Cynthia McCullough. I'm ready to oppose this mask mandate in Palmer, Alaska. Lonnie McCullough. COVID-19 epidemic, as some call it, has changed the way citizens shop, dine, fly, and work. For a few people have died, though a few people have died from the virus. Most have died when the COVID-19 virus is adding to additional health issues. The majority of infected people recovered from illness in 14 days or less. I believe wearing a mask should be a choice, not a mandate. From what I've read, the mask does very little to nothing at all stop the spread of the virus. Perhaps the mayor's office should be focused on getting everyone a booster immune system such as, as an added layer of protection. This should be the first line defense as an alternate to the mask or conjunction with the mask. Either way, wearing a mask should be a choice. Please have this ready to record. Okay, Emma McDonald. The mask mandate would severely impact Palmer business. I am a barber here in town and a large number of clients who said they no longer do business in Palmer if a mask mandate passes. Would all, always take in mind the most vulnerable of our clients who wear masks to allow any client to wear a mask without injunction. If one is forced upon, all my business will severely, all my business will severely suffer. Please vote against the mask mandate. Laura McHenry. I am ready to address your proposed ordinance number 2016 enacting a mask, emergency mask or face covering mandate. I strongly urge you to vote no on this ordinance. We are entering flu and cold season, so an increase in COVID-19 cases is expected. However, there's not a massive surge in cases in that valley. We are under the health orders issued by the government that will need to push requests, not demand or mandates, Alaskans wearing face covering, social distancing, stay home if you're sick. My observation is that nearly all Alaskans are voluntarily following health orders. There is no reason for city council to impose an EDA on Palmer. Your proposed ordinance would put the burden of enforcing mandate already struggling on small business. This is the time of the year when they normally look forward to increase sales from all these shoppers who rely on that income to boost their bottom line and health on June, late months of January and February. Many businesses are currently working hard just to stay afloat. Instead, instead of doing what you can to support them, you are threatening to impose an undue burden on policing the very customers that rely on them. Many people simply choose not to shop in Palmer. So not only will these businesses needly suffer, but the city will also lose tax revenue. The city reserves the right to use all available enforcement options to ensure compliance to this ordinance? What does that mean? Are you going to send Palmer city police who already have their hands full to check upon long-winded citizens or write a citation to a business owner because someone's mask fell below their nose? There is absolutely no reason to pass this ordinance. There's no evidence to prove that mask mandate is more effective than a request which is voluntary. And that super owner has done well slowing the spread of the virus. I will compense my neighbors to continue to act responsibly during this pandemic.
Should we go to the next one? This is a little bit long, let's wait and take what, we need about 10 minute break. We get a 10, okay. We're gonna go and take the 10 minute break. So our time here says 6:29.
Hi, 10 minute break, be right back. Don't forget to like and share. Appreciate everybody that's on there right now. Again, like and share, people need to be hearing and seeing what's going on. Um, it's still gonna be a good couple hours, if not longer, listening to more emails being read. Appreciate all your parents and your participation in today's livestream. And hopefully the new mic is doing much better at picking up the sound of people speaking today than it was the last week when I had my older mic. Thanks again.
I love that, I'm a paramedic. Seeing that I'm a paramedic and I'm basically, I said the same.
Well, as with most things that we've seen out there for things getting shot down in our state, the minority always seems to outweigh the majority's voice when it comes to certain subjects. Sadly.
Um, so you're down your neck, didn't you?
You're doing great, both of you. Good work, I missed it.
There's one way to the end. And then what I've learned, but there were a lot of work over the years, is you stop in peace, it's relaxed, take deep breath, relax, people will hear you, and you'll be okay.
You're making it aware, people wear those. That's, that's, that's all that needs to be done.
Nationwide, didn't Max one of those, you guys since 2007?
Yeah.
I think I joined back in 2007, probably. That guy right there was my high school teacher in Glen Allen.
Oh my gosh.
Arlen Hasen. I can't believe that. And I knew they moved to Palmer, but I lost, uh, 83. She was, he was, uh, he went, uh, Kennedy was killed. He came into our, my type B class, I didn't know it was a type B in our physics class. And he was just like almost in tears.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because President Kennedy had gotten shot.
We were, I was in between, I think was in between classes. I was in grade school.
Oh, yeah.
I was at Astoria, at Astor, uh, what was the name of that damn school? It was, it was, uh, it was, uh, it was an elementary school in Astoria.
Okay.
And John Jacob Astor Elementary School.
Huh.
And so I was, we were, I was in the hallway going someplace and that's when they gave the announcement that Kennedy had shot. The thing, the thing that was really interesting to me was that.
Who's that?
We just, we just, I had just moved to John Jacob Astor. And, because that was, that would have been.
Um, I do, but I'm gonna get him. I feel so down, he's still got four and a half hours.
And so what was funny about it was in my, in my grade school, when we were in, in the county, at Lewis and Clark, Kennedy came to Astoria. And so he came to Astoria Airport and, and so the school emptied, so all the school kids could go see, see the president. There was three very pissed off teachers in Lewis and Clark's, uh, consolidated school. Because one of them had to stay with me, the other one had to stay with my sister, and my other one had to stay with my brother, but my dad refused, he wanted to go see Kennedy.
Oh, yeah.
And the school district decided that if you didn't go, if you didn't go, you had to be at school. So my, my social studies teacher had to stay with me.
Okay. Oh my, I'm gonna say hi to Edna here.
It was crazy.
But it's funny, I was just looking up there and it caught my eye, that my school teacher. Okay, because there was an MC.
MCs.
Yeah, I don't know, I think I put Paul in.
Oh, no.
That's why legal.
She's got your wing.
Oh, okay.
They had 250 last time.
They had 500 emails and they're the MCs going alphabetically.
170.
170, you go.
Yeah, yeah.
What happened in the 500 they put on Facebook?
There's just few people.
That's me.
Yeah, yeah. No, we're doing alphabetical and, uh, I think we are in MCs, so.
So what's your last name?
I'm, I'm just gonna, we're gonna use. Yeah, I think it's, uh, Paul. You're right, I'm, you're right, you're doing good.
Okay. So I'll tell you what, can't you use, you can read yours then.
I don't care. That's amazing, that's so many of them though. This is just like about, let's see, yeah, we took a, we have.
700, maybe?
We had 205 that were supporting and what, 425 that are in opposition. And then I think there were three or four that were sort of neutral. Okay, yeah.
They go strong in the west.
You can't swear this morning or die that.
Is this nation in front of the states? Or are you gonna come to the US as well?
Well, we, we have very few US soldiers.
Life is pulling me the wrong trick in the book, should be right on time.
Well, I just saw a news. And that judge, that judge in Nevada, even after reading 800 affidavits, he turned around and said, well, it wasn't, there was no, there was no.
I just watched a video on YouTube for a judge that was prosecuting a convicted sentence to six months.
And she's just an. They had to drag her out of the courtroom to jail.
They had, you need more than resisting arrest.
I would, then there was another one, got up, thinks I'd take her off to jail. She tried to charge in there and the deputy was trying to back up, it's not there.
There was two of them, it just divested. I don't know the name of the device, but apparently put some type of device on railroad tracks that causes the rail train to auto brake and I was in.
Torpedo? A torpedo?
No, it's this, I can't remember the name of it. It's, it's some type of device that they can lay over the tracks.
Yeah, torpedoes will do that. It's an explosive charge.
And this, this wasn't explosive, this was, it was something, it was started in the ass, that's all.
Oh, I don't know.
But yeah, they, I saw this on the, I saw this on the, and, and they had to eat, they were charging, charging, and then Antifa came out and fought.
A lot of Antifas have gone to jail.
A lot of Antifas have gone to jail based on videos of what they were doing in the riots.
But, you know, people feel pretty strongly about...
Yeah. Hey, by first places, it's domestic war.
So the military thing went to shoot them.
Yeah. Right. I'm a glad you called City Council in the backwater.
Barrack Keen wall, bodies, dropping, dropping, dropping.
Absolutely.
Do you want to keep on going?
If the cops start shooting rioters and racists and people who are beating others with weapons, anyway, then this shit, it stops quickly.
Let's go ahead. Please, yeah. Please, sir. Um, my question?
Richard.
Yeah. Let's go ahead. Did you have a follow up comment? Uh, I don't think you can call me. You, you will get here. Let me just say, we're gonna go back, go back online. Uh, the county council person in town that checked in is councilwoman Jess. So he'll, he showed it in a few minutes, and when he does, I'll put it back on the record. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So go ahead.
Fine, okay. A little form.
Okay. Kelly McKay, oh five. City council members, my name is Kelly McKay, I'm president of Palmer since 1977.
That's good. While I do not reside in city limits, I do own two businesses in downtown city limits. I've been around long enough to see this town growing to the place it is today.
As one of the council members posted online, the town I love so much is made of not only the great residents within the city limits, it is made of the residents outside city limits and the businesses throughout this town. We have a diverse amount of businesses in this town that have become the go to place for surrounding areas, including all the way from Anchorage, L D. This town runs fairs and community events in short and all. These events would not happen if it was not for these small businesses supporting and promoting them. If I could write a 2020 note, I would. But small businesses have taken a hit. We are hanging on, but for how long? These ordinances you have submitted are an absolute kick to the stomach for most of us. These ordinances put all the responsibility back on us, small businesses, which we've already taken on responsibility of providing safe, providing a safe location. To me, this is telling me you do not think those businesses owners, Palmer, are running our business with right. We as a company have followed every rule and have taken every precaution to help prevent the spread of this fancy virus. We have gone so far to provide safe shopping times, courtesy pickup, and website sales for people that do not feel comfortable. My staff wore masks, whether their customer is or not, and not because I have mandated them to. So they do it out of respect for the customers and to provide a safe shopping place. I personally have been asked several times if we wear masks. My response is, it's strongly recommended, but not required for state mandate. In return, they think we provide a choice with their mask on. Neither of my businesses are in a high risk setting. We have much room for people to do, we have much room for people to social systems, and they do not gather for long periods of time. They're, they do their shopping, and leave. We do not have high traffic, unlike Red Myers and other major chains. Most of my consumers take responsibility. They know what is right for themselves and their families. They do not feel the need to take their choice of what is right for their families and loved ones. You are asking us to do, you are policing on this mandate at an undisclosed cost to us for not being jogged properly. You're, you are asking my 120 pound young staff member to tell a 250 pound customer to put their mask on and go away. You are forcing us to take a side, and we should not even be home. You are asking me to put my already hanging on businesses into another category we should not be in. How do we have enough? We are doing our jobs to the best we can with what we, quote, with what we are given. In an online group, one online council member stated the business was closed due to contact tracing. This council member is the owner of retail business that has been closed.
Just put my foot close, but that's your name.
Oh, well, that's your name.
Yeah, that's your name.
Okay. Great, Kelly McKay, go. Aiden Key, greeting. I just wanted to reach out to respect this day that our families are not in favor of the mask mandate. Force compliance never ends well, and I can assure you that Palmer AK is not on Anchorage. I am in favor of free choice. I encourage all who are at high risk to protect themselves appropriately. I am a registered pediatric, I see nurse, and I'm confident that masking our children is not healthy. We will not participate in this mandate if it passes. We consider ourselves outstanding citizens and contribute to the members of our community. But forcing this initiative is wrong. We will not be participating. Please reach out with questions kindly. Aiden. Delete the gate. Palmer City Council, please do not mandate the wearing of masks. They don't work anyway. Every medical professional I know tells me this. Only very specific masks work, and that's only when they are in a sterile environment, when they are not, when they aren't touching them constantly. This mandate will incur your local businesses, this virus has a rank 90.9% survival rate. Please do not give in to the grave, student of the nation. Please do not restrict our freedoms. I live in the valley because we open the market, it's an encouragement. And if this, this mandated, you will have a large pushback from the community and people who approve this will not be off as much longer. Thank you for your time, Delete the Gate. Douglas McKenna. To the Palmer City Council, our entire family closes the subject forces and demand to be rejected in its entirety. Should we be implemented, we will refuse to sharpen Palmer. We will also encourage all local businesses, should they desire improvement, to unite and force to defy the order. Should we decide to sharpen Palmer for our convenience, we will refuse to wear masks and accept the rest of jail time if necessary, expecting a free meal and a nice bed that Palmer Government expects. Thank you sincerely, Douglas. Dwayne McHillen, Quellon. Dear respected readers, this, this testimony is in response to the proposed ordinance number 2016. As a longtime Manuska Valley resident, one with family through sites in Palmer, and one who does daily commerce in the city, I reject the, his ordinance to apply reasons. One, most people Alaska men in Manuska City and Borough and City of Palmer buildings are either closed or already have mandates governing of facilities. Even the post office federal has mandates requiring sports, requirements for our workers. Two, most, if not all, men in Manuska Borough and school buildings, school district buildings, including schools, already have mandates requiring massive social distancing, even to the point of restricting or altering access for students and staff, thus requiring some online academics. Sports and after school activities have been severely refused or stopped in most cases. Most retail businesses have instituted their own mandates that could cause them to provide guidance on social distancing, wearing masks and even providing masks, e.g., Red Meyer. Four, some businesses such as McDonald's have closed their dining room, thus altering their sales and their work. Five, as per the governor, Alaska has responded effectively to this situation and thus has some of the responsibility, effectively to this situation and thus has some small numbers of cases, hospitalizations, and deaths nationwide. We take responsibility for our own health and therefore another mandate is not needed. Six, business owners and residents can take, can make their own choices on their health. For seeking a mandate from the council does nothing other than adding fear to already unstable time. Seven, risk is a, is a factor for all humans. Attached from the most current mortality statistics to the state of Alaska, the Manuska City and Borough, in 2018, for instance, there were 4,661 deaths, statewide averaging 371 per month. The top cause of death is cancer. The sixth is suicide, which is 100% preventable. Please note, there are 50 unintentional deaths and 21 suicides in Matsumo in 2018. Additionally, the data indicates that between 4 to 10 people perish per year due to influenza and pneumonia from 2014 to 2018 in the Matsumo. There is similar knowledge to COVID without closures and mask mandates. Currently, at the time this letter was written, we have experienced 98 COVID related deaths statewide and five for the Manuska City and Borough. There have been zero deaths reported for school aged children. The residents of Alaska, the Matsumo Borough, and the City of Palmer have a much higher chance of dying in an auto accident following forced suicide due to airship COVID. No deaths wanted, but simply put, this mandate does not need to know where is there an emergency. Eight, while rules and ordinances have ways of making it bigger, no, they're original intended. I realize that those wanting to institute orders really believe they are helping. My fear is, is that this ordinance will be extended beyond 60 days once you have, seriously, Dwayne. And then here is a packet of attachments that he attached with you. Death facts, and one, two, and then five pages of charts. Marianne Quellon. Dear Palmer City Council, first of all, I am appalled that Supreme Homes would have called this meeting private if it were not for the state's open meetings after pardon for a specific notice of meetings. How dare she infringe upon my freedom as President Palmer to be in the know of what is being decided? I have the right to be informed. Keep in mind, you want that little more than a dozen votes. Right now, the minority is ruling the majority. You pushing your own agenda is simply insubtle and distasteful. Basically, this is an example of a government trying to be the parent and make decisions for us, thinking you know what is best. What you are failing to see is the cure is more deadly than the disease. We will see suicide rates go up this year if we continue to lock down the state. Practicing good hygiene and getting outside is essential. Having fear into the hearts of the citizens of Palmer is not the answer. Our mental health is just as important as our physical health. 100%, I 100% do not support a mask mandate for Palmer, Alaska. Do not make your future interview with my friend, Marianne Quellon. Bob Mier. I am opposed to the request of mask mandate to see Palmer future for this on the record. Robert Mier. Pamela Mealan. I work in the healthcare industry. I see the numbers and can test the risks of COVID positive and false positive cases, those ranging from early showing symptoms to severe breathing issue requiring intubation. I am not opposed to the use of a mask when needed. I work long in crowded stores, where distancing is an issue. I'm a responsible adult, after all. I'm 53 years old and still alive. I am perfectly capable of making quality decisions about my healthcare, which according to the left is my right. Even the unconstitutional, traumatic masks and their use, when there have been zero scientific studies conducted on the effects of making masks, the effects of masking specific to the COVID-19 virus, I believe that my fellow men to make their own choices based on these constitutional, God given rights. The governor of Alaska has made wise choices in trusting the people of the state with their decisions while keeping us well and long in conjunction with medical professionals who might hold a higher guard. He's playing with us to make the choices that naturally serve our service. We have all been aware, there would likely be seasonal surge with this virus. It is not new news. We are better prepared to have strategic plans and effective protocols in place to deal with the virus than we had at the peak in March, April, May. How does the city council deem that they have the right to issue this mandate? The people need to know. In short, this is, this is an incredibly powerful mandate, an exhibit in control that is entirely in a very free society. Trust your fellow man, Pamela Mealan. Christine Mercer. This mask mandate cannot be passed in the City of Palmer, and mandates all over the world need to be lifted. China wears masks all the time, and look where COVID-19 originated. The masks obviously do not give China the catching this virus. What makes anyone think that masks will protect them? People are now suffering from bacterial infections from constantly wearing masks, and the CDC admitted do not work. On September 4th, 2020, Chuck Baldwin wrote an article titled, "CDC Vindicate Dr. Yucah Keen," index itself. He states that the 30-year veteran physician, Dr. Anne Yucah Keen of Caswell, exposed the gross exaggeration of armed death certificates that were being encouraged by the CDC as a way of limiting public perception regarding the nature extent of the virus. It turns out, Dr. Yucah Keen was right all along, and her understanding of science and medicine has been vindicated in the latest report by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. According to the CDC, only 6% of deaths are originally reported as caused by COVID coronavirus, where death is loosely caused. As Dr. Yucah Keen won Montana's from being arrested for deaths attributed to the COVID-19, or cases in which patients are still positive, but who have underlying health conditions that actually cause the deaths. While this happens all across the country, finding out that the CDC has recorded this death and showing that COVID-19 is the exclusive or primary cause of death is death in only 6% of cases, and has been inflated to walking 1,567%. It should be noted that it doesn't mean perceived that COVID-19 didn't have a role to play in the other 94% deaths. What it does mean is that patients started with or from other ailments, ailments that are far more serious. Essentially, what the CDC has admitted, that those who have died from heart attacks or flu were claimed to have died from COVID undeath certificates, and the CDC reporting whether or not that was the primary cause of the death are necessarily a cause at all. If Montana COVID-19 rates are largely so much of those across the United States, this means that approximately 6 Montanans have died exclusively from COVID-19. Meanwhile, 100 are blocked, and many local health boards seem to be under the latest scientific findings. Did you get that? The primary cause of death attributed to the coronavirus has been inflated to walking 1,567%. And did you hear this? Essentially, what the CDC has admitted is that those who have died from heart attacks or flu were claimed to have died of COVID undeath certificates, and the CDC reporting whether or not that was the primary cause of the death are necessarily a cause at all. If Montana COVID-19 rates are largely so much of those across the United States, this means that approximately 6 Montanans have died exclusively from COVID-19. Meanwhile, 100 are blocked, and many local health boards seem to be under the latest scientific findings. Did you get that? The primary cause of death attributed to the coronavirus has been inflated to walking 1,567%. And did you hear this? Essentially, what the CDC has admitted is that those who have died from heart attacks or flu were claimed to have died of COVID-19 undeath certificates, and the CDC, and the CDC reporting whether or not that was the primary cause of the death are necessarily a cause at all. And then, two, three, four, five, six, and then, she had additional four pages. This one is from MHSTZ 2014. My response to those ordinance number 2016, over seven months ago, we were told two weeks to flatten the curve, since that, at that time, domestic run deaths, January through June 2020, had grown up 180% over the same time in 2019. As of July 2020, CDC director Robert Redfield said in a Buck Institute webinar that suicide and drug overdoses surpassed the death rate for COVID-19 among high school students. The Anne Mae States, 35 states reported increased adult death during the same time. There are 40 million jobs have been lost. There is a well established fact that child abuse increases during times of financial stress. As those jobs are being lost, 40,000 less children were served by, by child abuse prevention centers. According to an August 20, anchored in the news article by Samantha Schmidt of the Washington Post, 40,000 less children were saved from abuse due to social distancing laws. A lot of misery to all ages have been caused by social distancing laws, and it has been over a disease within 99% survival rate for people 60 and younger, and 94.6% survival rate for people over the age of 69. According to the CDC, in the Matsumo Valley, over the last seven days, transmission cases has gone 29% in workplaces, about 5% in retail and recreational businesses, but has increased 3% in people's homes. The proposed regulation, besides being unconstitutional, would often ultimately force people home for now expected to catch COVID-19 if we are to believe the CDC. Your ideas counterproductive idea. Just as two weeks to flatten the curve has stressed out for months, I wonder if you two will stand your word to creep, will expect to cover Thanksgiving and perhaps try and child, release child, the opportunity to talk to a loved relative who might be able to help. We should... We should shut down the Christ mass and extinguish the joy from that day also. We're getting drawn a line, when to stop. Our experience has shown us that it never stops once it begins. Your questionable preventive measures would cause more harm to people, so just don't. Andrew Mesmer. Hi, my name is Andrew Mesmer. My wife Caitlin, our four kids, and I just moved to Palmer from Anchorage two months ago. We love living here in the heart of downtown Palmer. We were recently sent a message about a special city council meeting around the topic of a mask mandate. We will not be able to attend the meeting, but would like to send our thoughts and opinions to Palmer. We are strongly opposed to mask mandate. We literally left Anchorage because of the overregulation in business and the mandates such as Kevin Rollins's COVID nineteen. We love living here. We want to be involved here, raise our kids here, etc. The COVID nineteen numbers in Anchorage are proof that a mask mandate will not slow the COVID nineteen cases. There are many studies that show since the mask mandate, it has done close to nothing to slow the spread. We ask you not to implement a mandate and trust that citizens of the community of Palmer and last hand of our best for the balance. Thank you sincerely, Andrew Mesmer. Micah Mesner. I would plead that you not shut down the following Anchorage, as I have seen many principal family members part of the right are negatively affected by the mandates of Anchorage and waits they will never recover. I have had my brother, sister-in-law, and a family just moved out to Palmer because of what Anchorage has been doing. The line has to be drawn somewhere in freedom and choice. Having businesses shut down if they lost will not fix the problem. Cautionary, you do not follow Anchorage. I was told to tell you the infamous public testimony. Thank you, Micah Mesner. Jeff Miller. To whom it may concern, this message is the pending of the mother family. We do not live within the Palmer city limits, but our Palmer businesses' addresses are Palmer addresses. We are blessed to consider Palmer our home city. We can appreciate the city council bringing special attention to this issue. We feel it would be most prudent to leave the mask requirements within the city at the advice, not mandate level. The key to the CDC study was that the mask did not protect someone from being COVIDed, but rather would help limit the spread of COVID if someone was infected owning a mask. Continuously wearing a mask is not the standard healthy practice. Additionally, masks create complications for asthmatics and more people, aeroology issues. The more production solution is to buy a higher suite, avoid COVID areas and those with COVID symptoms or concern should wear masks. It would be more reasonable to know that someone wearing a mask has possible symptoms thus creating a healthy awareness versus blindly covering up the well of the mask. We need to move forward with long-term solutions, similar to H one N one. This virus will be around in a decade. Thus, we need to practice consistent and sustainable habits. These practices have spelled out very well on the CDC's study of H one N one that my experience was drastically more costly worldwide when compared to COVID. There are many good lessons to be learned and followed from the world's battle of H one N one. A short-term or long-term mask mandate is not one of the solution. Thank you, Jeff Monica Taylor Grayson and Cole Miller. John and Candy Miller. To Palmer City Council, I wish to express my opposition to Anchorage's file restriction, restricted mandates, even considered here in Palmer. We conduct a lot of visits in Palmer and enjoy the people and atmosphere. I have seen firsthand the debate, do you believe Dean results these mandates are having in Anchorage? My wife and I are both seniors and will no longer begin our business in Palmer if this ordinance passes. Taylin and Tony Miller. To whom it may concern in reference to emergency ordinance twenty dash zero sixteen, we are being told that there is not enough healthcare workers to treat emergency patients. However, we are not being told whether that is partly because our healthcare workers are being tested constantly for COVID and then put into quarantine even without symptoms, despite the fact that these steps have proven to be unreliable. We do break in the human spirit as humans. We have to live with the virus now. It will never go away, even with the vaccine. This road we are on is leading us to a world where we are completely without genuine human connection. We must look life in order for dying to be something that you don't want to do. This is not living. These overheard questions and mandates take too great a toll on the human spirit and provide far too little, if any, benefits for the human body. We need to see one another's smile, to breathe fresh air, to laugh out loud, to have normal matters. We need to live life fully and unafraid right now. Not one of us is promised the time to wait to live later. There are many great esteemed scientists and medical professionals on both sides of this heated debate. Public servants, stop grabbing power and rolling over for applause. Do know mandate was not settled. Stop stripping citizens of their rights and responsibility to choose for themselves how to live. We do not support mask mandate in Palmer, sincerely, Taylin and Tony Miller. Darren Newclerk. Please do not inform of this ordinance. I am a true business husband, I have said my name and am not in favor of this at all. Anyone entering my business is welcome to wear a mask if they wish, but I would prefer not to. I am currently in quarantine as my daughter tested positive for COVID. This despite the fact she wore masks both time at school. I have never worn a mask and as of yet have not tested positive. Please agree consideration Darren Newclerk. Caitlin Moffett. I would like to oppose mask mandate in Palmer. We could up to the business numbers as to whether or not they want to require them. Businesses in Palmer are struggling enough as it is in mask mandate, but not only do more damage to the local economy. If the mask mandates were effective, there would be decrease in the number of cases where they are required. This is simply not the case. I am capable of making an informed decision and do not need a city council mandate for something that has not proven to be highly effective. I can choose to wear a mask if I am concerned and if I really am concerned, I can choose to stay home, just like every other person who lives in Palmer. Just like I can choose to stay home or drive slower if the roads are icy. Passing a mask mandate will not make the COVID probable way. It will encounter other problems for local businesses struggling to make ends meet. Thanks Caitlin Moffett. Kathy Moffett. To mayor greetings and members of the Palmer City Council, I request upon the right of the record of the city council meeting on November eighteenth, twenty twenty. I am strongly opposed to any ordinance that supports government authority over members of our community. I spend time in my new Palmer almost every day. I buy groceries, pill, store items, now frequently eating establishments. I routinely participate in the Palmer fundraiser. I have been a member of this community for over fifty years. I have fourteen recruits speaking chocolate. I can also travel to our neighbor in the west and gain less tax. However, I choose Palmer. Palmer I know does not need self-acquainted progressive council person to change it. It does not need his government to begin to control citizens as well as those that live in our community. The belief that other people need someone to do their thinking and make their choices is a silver soul. Today, it might be mandate to wear masks, tomorrow it might be a curfew. Regardless, I encourage the city to think about the domino impact to what on the surface might seem like an appropriate action in the city. And the city council has authority to issue a mask mandate to protect the citizens of Palmer to burden the places on its businesses and citizens. Considering the problem, what is the factor of COVID nineteen to the citizens of Palmer? What is the hospitalization rate due to COVID nineteen to the citizens of Palmer? Or is the mortality rate of the citizens of Palmer affecting COVID nineteen? COVID nineteen is not one away. Those, trust that those who compromise help will make the best choices for their well-being. Will the business owners be responsible for noise and forcing the mask mandate? Not all masks are created equal. Designs that don't impact its effectiveness, how masks more impact its effectiveness? Is this organization one to regulate the wearing of masks outside of businesses? In closing, I want the council Palmer to note that this proposed action highlights a using for strong opposition to Palmer annexation. It appears that being within the city limits weights with the loss of freedom and a larger presence of government control. This is not an asset I desire. As for my house, I choose freedom and the ability to make responsible decisions for my family. Caitlin Moffett. Burke Monaco. Palmer City clerk and Supreme Holmes, I oppose the proposed mask mandate in Palmer as it will unnecessarily costuring on the small businesses throughout the city. Anchorage has had the strictest mandates throughout this pandemic and yet have had the highest numbers of cases per test administered. This proposed mandate is completely unnecessary and does not need to be implemented in our valley. The community has shown great effort in, in doing our best to social distances ourselves to be courteous to others by staying humble, feeling innocent symptoms, etc. And our numbers reflect this. We do not need a mandate, but neither people of Palmer have proved that to go above and beyond to help our community. Please read the record of the meeting. Thank you for your time, citizen of Palmer, Burke Monaco. Julie Moore. To Palmer City Council, as an active member of this committee, is one who moved here from a long time in Anchorage in college because of my love for this town. I'm here to say that people of Palmer are caring, respectful, and reliant on us. This is, that is why when I say that my mask would be right here, I do not do so lightly or as one who wears all the fava for my fellow license. It is because I care for the well-being of the mental invisible that it would be to reject this proposed mandate. If you research cities that have been wearing masks, other citizens come into cities that have no such mandate, you will see that it has absolutely no effect on their case numbers. Please see link to articles below. Additionally, the CDC itself conducted a study just two years ago on effectiveness of masks on facial comorbidism from flu-like disease and found no significant positive results in reducing the spread of more people with no actual symptoms of the sickness. The very fact that the CDC is, yeah, can only think that face comorbidism may be effective tells us all we need to know as the word, as the use of the word may reduces their words to emptiness and without any scientific basis. Rather than the use of masks, not only increases the likelihood of contracting of a global respiratory illness due to the constant breathing contaminated air, it also spreads decisiveness and fear amongst our community when you can pray for your body and now more than ever. If we do not fight for our freedom and right to achieve what is best for our lives, we are the last ones in a way that comes under the interest of spreading something worse for all in cities and towns in the COVID. Please consider seriously the impact precedent of such a decision. Give Palmer the respect we deserve to choose for ourselves how we want. Thank you, Julie Moore. And then she listed. She then listed five different things that follow right now. William and Susan Moore. Palmer City Council, please do not implement the mask mandate in Palmer. We will police ourselves and do not wish to see the city of Palmer taking on its role. We want to support, protect our local businesses and citizens succeed to prosper now and in the future. This mandate is not the answer. Instead, please be encouraged to protect liberty and the innocence of our citizens. Steven Williams, Susan Moore. Stephen Morrell. I'm against a mask mandate for Palmer as it should be up to the individual or business to choose their way. Please read this in the public record. Jeanette Force. I am requesting that you vote on emergency ordinance twenty dash zero sixteen for our mask wearing. Please allow last ones to make personal choices for themselves in return from overregulating people's lives, such as having an Anchorage. The valley is far less than simple populated with Anchorage, making a mask ordinance unnecessary. Furthermore, since enacting the mask mandate in Anchorage, their numbers have somewhat gone up, proving this bill of work. Individual businesses and organizations can decide for themselves if they want masks more than their establishments. Did you remember that you are a last ones of individual choice is a great, is of greatest priority to a last ones? Please read this in the record. Thank you, Jeanette Force. Ronald Lee Moses. My name is Ronald Lee Moses and I know people who take in Palmer. This proposed mandate concerns me for several reasons. It tells me the council has no idea what entails to run my daily operations. The COVID nineteen mitigation measures we have already put in place or how well we are performing with social distancing. We are sensitive to the worrying needs of our customers we have presented us with. I am pleased volunteer for a mask for social distancing count we maintain. We offer shopping, appointments, curbside, and online options for those in the unsafe crowd. And none of these options are being utilized by our customers. I've only heard from one customer who says she will not shop in my store without managing her mask. And I've had thirteen customers tell me why they will not shop in my store if you two require masks. We've already started putting distancing plans in place to limit crowds. Look, because we haven't given up hoping to finally see business increase. Normally, we hope to be decorating for the children at home on Christmas. In the middle of a pandemic, it would be irresponsible to tell the unneeded business owner to allow that activity to occur as usual with the amount of screaming that goes on. Can we adapt it and have a solution to address this? Please trust us to modify our operations in the interest of public safety without going to the extreme of mandate. It does not have overwhelming public support. When city council considers policies and mandates, they must consider the impact that they will have on businesses, on the businesses community. Require business, business owners to be in authority on compliance and public audit. To business owners, it is not about the mask. It is not being required to police an issue on behalf of the city. If this passage is written, you will be required not to trespass clean customers from our store who refuse to comply. This proposed mandate implies the city will somehow compel compliance through unavailable means. Any available means, please enlighten us and define the penalties and the means the city intends to use to compel our compliance. I have some interest in hearing the city determine a way in to discuss the legality of this mandate as well as the risks assessment of whether or not it exposes the status of the city to future litigation. Please consider this mandate, which faces the burden of enforcement on your small businesses, namely of white children alone. It all poses an adversarial position with paying customers or access to selling non-compliant customer. She seems to take their businesses online to Amazon. We don't want to pay any, any customer who has supported our businesses over the years. There are many private reasons people have not, for wearing masks and they are none of my business. If the city wants a polarizing and decisive mask mandate, the city needs to be responsible for enforcement. I can't vote in the city as a president, but I am paying attention to the trends of political policies the city council proposes that affect the business climate in city limits. I may not be able to vote by ballot, but I can vote with right of heat and take my business to a more business-friendly environment. By all accounts, nineteen eighties in Palmer are rather lethal, unreliable with border windows and energy storefronts. Ronald Lee Moses. Holly Lushad. I read the council packet for this meeting and it seems to be very much aligned with a couple of terrorism. COVID has a ninety-nine point nine percent survival rate, ninety-nine point nine. That's next year's normal clue, or at least it could be if we could just stop this nonsense and move on with our lives from the whole government diabolical. Your current face masks, after having already faced this illness for the last eight months, will only be taking many steps backwards. In only our one as a booming Palmer colony and doing so ready for the holiday, do not pass this mandate. Do not continue to add to the fear monitoring. Do not turn a blind eye to the overreach of the dominant. Better yet, do not continue to add to the tolerance of yourselves. I support everyone's right to protect themselves. If someone feels they'd be more safe wearing a mask or face covering, I support that, but please, please, please remember my right to choose for myself not to. Sincerely, Paul Moshen. Kayla Loire. Did you think I would like to take a moment to lay down my thoughts on the proposed emergency mandate twenty twenty dash zero sixteen? First, I would like to say I consider myself from Palmer for the past fifteen years or so. I'm a police officer for the city of West LA. Currently, I live outside of city limits, but on the Palmer side of the valley. I do regular, maybe regular Palmer many times each week. I have handled most jobs in the city Palmer. Normally, I might need some, and I head to the stores in Palmer. I strongly disagree with the idea of emergency mandate to force everyone to wear a mask. I believe the best way to protect our freedom and nation is to leave the rights of the people up to the people. We need to give everyone person the ability to choose the necessary steps to protect themselves and our families. I have had many conversations with people concerning the wearing of masks and the severity of COVID nineteen. Many people have been hurt more by the mandates and restrictions of COVID nineteen. This is not said to take away from the, from any individuals who suffer the loss of members of COVID nineteen. We need to give business owners the right to run their businesses free without forcing mandates on them. The great thing about capitalism is each business owner can learn how to business how they see best and no one is forced to cause consumers to protect their businesses. Many businesses have adapted their own safety ways for their employees and customers to interact without forcing everyone to be wearing masks. The first step down is very slow to tell individuals who live in a livelihood on front of their businesses how they need to run their businesses, especially if it takes away from potential business, which I believe it will. I would like to mention from a unique point of view and my personal opinion as a law enforcement officer and I guard the law enforcement action of community. Community policing is a huge topic in legal training world today. Our job in short is to protect and serve the communities we are in. General rule is your policy is because someone else is advertising and we are there to attempt to solve the problem. Most of the job must be make sure the scene is safe and knowing some of the rest who care is communicating with people. Many people are finding communication on a personal level extremely challenging with the person, especially when that person is carrying a gun, other weapons, wearing a rifle, who fast and has a face mask, leaving other eyes visible. Communication is important when trying to solve a murder, trying to figure out who stole a candy bar. It is equally as important in the relationships we hold inside and outside of our job. It is equally as important in the relationships we all hold inside and outside of our job. A huge amount of communication is through facial expressions. Taking facial expressions away, as well as mocking the voice of the speaker, is a step backwards for a breakdown of communication. We all receive an emergency update or request to ourselves, and urge us to maintain distance of our masks. I believe this was the, this was the only needed step to encourage safety in our communities. I have faith in each person's individual choice to determine what they need to do to protect themselves. I believe this is the danger step towards human rights of the people, given the government's dangerous power of society. Linda Moirer, Palmer City Council, please do not implement the mask mandate in Palmer. If this is implemented, I will go out towards supporting businesses where masks are not mandatory and avoiding businesses in Palmer whenever possible. I see as a piece of authority when we want to enforce something that the governor or hospital does not feel necessary. I do not wear a mask when I feel restricted, but it's not appropriate to force a mask mandate. Consider Linda Moirer. Paul Moirer, I will appreciate reading this to the record of a meeting we held Wednesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty, concerning the unconstitutional proposal to require all humans, whether healthy or not, to wear masks that handle their ability to really refresh the last manner, which dehumanizes their appearance as tampering on verbal communication serves to spread irrational fear. From the operation of events, one in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve local bands which have connected them with another, and to sing among the powers of air, the separate equalization to which the laws of nature and the laws of God entitle them, a hesitant respect to the opinions of mankind and the powers that issue to correct the cause which build them into the separation. We hold this truth to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, they are endowed by the Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among those are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, drawing their just powers from the consent of the government. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government laying this foundation on such principles, and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that government law established should not be changed for right, and trans, transient clauses. And importantly, all experience hath shown, shown that mankind are more exposed to suffer, while evils are sufferable than to the rights themselves by abolishing the forms to express custom. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object, it ends as a dying to reduce them under absolute disposism, it is in their right, it is their duty to throw off such government and to break new guards for the future security. The ability of a healthy American to breathe fresh air is an actual right endowed upon them by the Creator. No government has the right to bring this liberty without the due process of the law as enshrined right in the U.S. Constitution. Any public servant who unlawfully and unconsciously enforces such illegal and unconstitutional laws, ordinances, or other, or other orders, or orders loses all legal immunity for violating a person's natural rights. Moreover, if a public servant uses physical force to enforce an illegal and unconstitutional law, or return order, they shall be subject to the same law, same use of force by law or a citizen while defending their natural rights. I do not live in Palmer by frequent shopping city limits. These are principles I will apply anywhere in legal laws, ordinances, or orders are affected upon me or my family. I say this as an American who served my country uniform for twenty-five years, not under threat. As a promise, should you or your forces choose to oppose, you will not constitutional ethics. Rachel Moirer, Palmer City Council members, good evening. I'm a full-time worker, first of all, in this network in Palmer. I do all my shopping and personal business in this town, which indicates that the emergency ordinance twenty sixteen, twenty zero sixteen will greatly affect me and my job and my personal life. We all have been living in and through this pandemic since April. We have read the suggested actions to take, leaving a test deposit for further or reperson notes on the house. We've had time to think and prepare, we've assessed the risks, and are taking action accordingly. To enforce such an ordinance as twenty zero sixteen is a gross overreach by the city of Palmer. And on my basis, we do not go maskless without protocol. Our hospitals are prepared and equipped, our government has left us, left us to make our own decisions, and I choose respect for neighbors' decisions to make the best choice for them. My neighbor's choice to not wear a mask does not affect my choice. Our businesses have and are exercising their freedom to require face masks and turn people away if that is what they want to do. In our small town, we are living in tune with this pandemic, and we're in rather peaceful state compared to the nation around us. Our goal is to fight stock to the end and without destroying our own livelihood, or that of our neighbors. Emergency ordinance twenty dash zero sixteen is not meant to help us reach it. In this time, we need our neighbors, our families, and our fellow last ones to pull together and support one another. If our jobs and businesses are to derive a need to respect one another, keep our businesses open and our jobs steady. Creating a strike and turning customers away is not the best interest of many, many of our businesses, nor the community's best interest. It is not just about how, I do not want to live in town where we call the police at each other because one chooses not to wear a face mask, which in turn puts our officers in an untameable position. Respectfully, Joyne Moore. Johnny Murdock, while I could support a resolution urging all the following recommendations in this ordinance, I urge a no vote, making these recommendations a city mandate and law.
You missed, you missed, the tape, you missed the Muncie, Victoria Muncie, she on backside of the tape? Did you see a Muncie? Okay, we're good. Nope, no, nobody has it. Must be a typo. Or a fan of, you know. It'll been right there. Okay. No, we have, but we're the, yeah.
Yeah, we already carry it.
We do carry it.
Carrie Murphy, I'm writing, writing this on behalf of my family, my husband and family. I do not agree with this ordinance. We wear masks in two stores, we wear them at school, we wear them at church. They are obviously not working, so I'm just going up. Making this for them more isn't going to help. Making this ordinance is just going to alienate, alienate people and keep them coming into the town. The businesses are going to suffer. As a resident of the city of Palmer, I completely disagree and ask this not to be passed. Thank you, Carrie Murphy.
Jonas Musgrave, to whom it may concern, I would like to address the recommendation to require masks in Palmer. Palmer has a great reputation that consists of kindness, local support, and being a community based on relationships. To mandate masks is to change the entire dynamic of the authority community. Allow me to demonstrate this story through, demonstrate this through a story from a friend. A man walks on the street and has a sandwich. He runs into a man who does not have a sandwich. The man asks him if he can have a sandwich. The man leans aside and says, sure, you can have a sandwich. And receives the man his sandwich. A relationship has been built based on compassion and gratitude. Second scenario occurs. The man is walking down the street with a sandwich and runs into a man who doesn't have a sandwich, but this time a government official comes over and tells the man, yes, hand over a sandwich. The man said, no, this is mine, and worked hard for the sandwich. The official forces the man to give out what's his. The man concedes. There are still many relationships established, but now it's a bitterness resentment and hatred. By requiring masks, it takes away the choice to build relationships based off compassion and kindness, which is what Palmer is known for. Please don't destroy the very reason people enjoy living in Palmer. I urge you today to not mandate a red mask that could create bitterness and resentment in a town filled with compassion. In this time of isolation hardship, the warmth of Palmer's people, the harmony that creates holds alive. Please don't take it away. Thank you, Jonas Musgrave.
Laura Myers, hello, I would like to reach out to Palmer City Council in regards to special meeting that's planned for November eighteenth, sixteen, regarding mandatory masks in city limits, emergency ordinance number twenty dash zero sixteen. I ask that this testimony might be during the method of meeting. I strongly urge the council to not mandate masks in Palmer. Our last ones have watched the Anchorage Institute of Masked Mandate months ago, and their COVID numbers continue to rise dramatically. In addition, so do the reports of lowing and serious community tension. I've heard of many individuals who have special needs and other health issues, who would be greatly affected by the mandate in a negative way. I witnessed firsthand how many vicious and mean retaliatory remarks and incidents that these individuals have expressed due to the public being uneducated while having a mask mandated plates. It tends to only justify if some individuals inherently to bully create a mob effect. It is a recipe for very traumatic experiences that some individual who struggled to cope with long after COVID systems on. As Americans, we have the liberty and privilege to make personal choices regarding our health. This is a matter of entering on, to be slippery slope. At this moment, this only mask being discussed and suggested as mandated mixture, perhaps something else. We stand on the fact that Americans are free men and women who have a right to make our own choices regarding this matter. We'll continue to work together for the greater good for our community, doing things like grocery pickup, proper sanitation, and wearing masks when deemed appropriate, social distancing, et cetera. But these things should never reach a point where they become mandated. We are concerned that in doing so, you will only continue to heighten fear, the divide among neighbors and community members, and institute a system of penalties on punishments for things that are not the government's right to control or mandate. Palmer's not California, Palmer's not New York, Palmer's not Anchorage. The community chose to, to help support our city, not to, not institute mandates that will start to become like a negation ownership over a town. Please remember, your boundaries, they do not take liberties when you have no right to do so. I per one, do wear a mask everywhere I go. I don't hit up groceries at the curb, I have not been to a store, church, or restaurant since the end of January, and use hand sanitizer before and after pumping gas, et cetera. Leaving inside to homeschool this year out of a willingness of caution. However, we do not support or endorse any mask mandate whatsoever, that the people continue to be free American citizens, so that so many brave and human, often dying for two dogs, and exercise their free choice regarding their personal bodies, health, and instructions for others and such. Thank you, respectfully. Laura Myers, the last minute, and Family Services Executive Director, Good morning.
Nellie Nargani, Palmer City Council, I'm writing this letter in regards to possible mask mandates in city of Palmer. I'm a medical provider in Palmer and have many elderly, asthmatic, anxiety, and zoonopedia patients. It is not in their best interest to be wearing masks. We do encourage them to social distance, but the masks, but the rest of them wearing masks can be very dangerous. These patients still need to shop for goods and enter buildings for medical issues. When in public, they are harassed and removed from stores, which is a very rare practice already. A mask mandate is not going to make this worse. I have also had a large number of patients who do not have COVID-19 and recover. Most have only minimal symptoms. These patients also don't need to be wearing masks as they've already been immune from coronavirus or COVID-19, but these patients are harassed and removed from buildings. Please, if you feel compelled, write a recommendation for people who are masked. But do not write a mandate for the use. Thank you, Nellie Nargani.
Gary Nelson, please don't impose mask mandate. If your office forces this, it will only create conflict and, and risk between businesses and patrons. Let's not make doing business any more difficult. Keep in mind that the majority of patrons of Palmer's citizens don't live in Palmer proper, and have been going about their lax, stout mask in their phone. Language used by deputy mayor comes as well as governor of Denver, who is reference, is dramatic, unhelpful, ignores the reality of cases and death, and is evidence of desire for creeping in the state. Might allow the specific patrons to operate however they want regarding masks without fear of repercussions from an overtaking household. If, if businesses want patrons to wear masks, they should be permitted to do so, but the opposite should also be true. The hospitalization rate is point zero percent, or seven one hundredths of one percent, and the death rate is point zero one three percent, or thirteen thousandths of one percent. This is not something that requires you to meddle with how people want to run businesses or conduct themselves, reading as more valuable, Gary Nelson.
John Nelson, to the Palmer City Council, resident in Palmer and vast suburban all last times, this disease has a greater than ninety-nine percent survival rate. We will all get it sooner or later. My grandparents' homes started back here in the forties, and they face a far greater risk than what we are facing today. I was born based on hospital, my wife was born in Palmer Hospital, and we are residents of the mass suburb. I'm a business owner and my family votes. My family and I adamantly oppose the mask mandate in Palmer, and do not want our community turning to another anchor, like Anchorage, which is sinking the economy of Alaska. This proposed mandate, while it is a symbol of Palmer, reduces revenue to Palmer's task base by deterring people from conducting this in Palmer. There's plenty of contradictory scientific data as to if masks, masks are effective or even safe. Even states on the box of masks that these masks do not keep you from dealing COVID-19. Wearing a mask is a personal decision. I, for one, need oxygen to breathe, and I have freedom to choose whether or not to wear masks, to my, to wear masks to protect myself from others. It's up to me to manage the risks in my environment. No government has the authority to force people to wear masks, or stifles every breath I take. No government has the authority to demand businesses act like Nazi brown shirt COVID enforcers to bully people into wearing masks. No government has the authority to issue unconstitutional mandates that infringe upon our unalienable freedoms. The government's only position should be to issue timely recommendations, best practices of proper guidance, such as drink plenty of fluids and take supplements to boost your system, like vitamin C, zinc, vitamin D, et cetera. Wash your hands before and after puberty or ten degrees. Consider limiting your gatherings, and or keep your distance, or consider wearing a mask if you are in a high-risk category or around others. If you're around a clean, copper sneeze, then promptly wash your hands or use hand sanitizer. Use sanitizing wipes, skin, cameras, cables, commonly touch service, like door locks, clean. And if you're sick, stay home. If however, the city council chooses passive mask mandate, it will be the Palmer community who suffers the most. We are happy to take our best also, because we are not the worst, John Nelson.
Sierra Nelson, opposition to the mask mandate, mask mandate, Sierra Nelson.
Sharona Newus, to my fellow former residents and members of the city council, it has been said that one of the most valuable issues you can give another community is the ability to look at a situation from another perspective. This is what I shall attempt to do now. Regardless of how you feel about politics or public health issues against us today, I would like to offer a different perspective on issues of mask mandates that I would ask you to consider. This is such shown that one of few women have been victims of sexual abuse. As you know, these statistics are even higher than the national average in state of Alaska. For some of us, our innocence and our voice was stolen in such an irreligious way. For some of us, this mask mandate hurts us more deeply in, in such a different way. To be forced to see our faces covered causes us to have flashbacks and relieve former trauma. I feel the physical symptoms I have seen are inability to breathe, heart racing, et cetera, all signs of panic attacks and PTSD. This mandate is not good for many reasons, in my opinion, but this particular one is very personal to me, and those are luxury. Going to the post office the other day to pick up a package, I noticed finally enough that deepened, and we ask with the faction, please be considered. I'm asking you today to do as that. Please be considered. I'm conservative letters in the committee like myself, that have been victims of abuse and how this impacts our mental and emotional health. You may see this no big deal, or just a piece of cloth. To some of your fellow citizens, it represents so much more. I urge you to really consider this as you make your decision today. I'm hopeful people wearing a mask if they feel so inclined, for one reason or another. But please also consider the implications of mental and emotional health.
All of those, and we don't need to make these, we just, we just see where open your, where the participants are. Also, best, we need you to read your phone.
I'm gonna do this.
John, I guess you can flip over to my, John.
It's not you, it's over here.
Hello. Okay. Yes, well, I already, it's for Manny over here.
Okay, now, okay, okay. I'm sorry. I should, I heard you've been warned, uh.
I'm Mike Allen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Okay, from Ellen Newfer. Palmer City Council, please do not implement the mask mandate you're considering for Palmer. There is little to no evidence that requiring masks in any way changes the number of COVID-19 cases occurring in the area. If people feel more comfortable wearing one, that is absolutely their prerogative. But for those of us who feel masks will do nothing to stop the spread of virus, this is simply an infringement on our rights. If you choose to implement this mandate, my family and I will avoid Palmer and look elsewhere on shopping. We have no desire to do this, but we feel it would be necessary. Thank you for taking this with consideration. Heidi Ober, it's my understanding there are some reasons for opposing a mask mandate in Palmer. As a Palmer resident myself, my family and I respectfully request that you do not support a mask mandate. The debate can be argued in favor or opposed, but we should have the right to choose. We can coexist. Those in favor or endorsed, we all.
Those in favor or endorse the law, while honoring individual business choices to recover coverings, do not make it a mandate. Jason Ohr, Palmer City Council, please do not implement the mask mandate in Palmer. If this is implemented, I will go elsewhere to support businesses where masks are not mandatory and avoid doing business in Palmer whenever possible. This is, okay, this is from Peter O'Byrne, and he already became spoken person. But Edie has not, so this is Edie O'Byrne. I am alarmed that the city of Palmer would consider any mandates. I am here to implore you not to follow the example behavior. We've had months of research and learn about this virus, COVID-19, and we know that forcing masks is not the answer based on science and many doctors' professional opinions. Aside from the health concerns, I think the toll this will have on children, I have young children who are still learning what's safe and not safe. It's not safe for them to become conditioned to go with adults who cover most of their face. They cannot identify them or even see them as someone they can talk to, even if this is wrong. This is also damaging psychologically. They cannot connect emotionally and feel isolated and robotic, guessing what the teacher wants because they can't hear very well and can't read lips or expressions. I can't allow my children to be conditioned to dangerous practices, and I don't feel right about engaging in myself for many additional reasons I cannot share. Please hear us all out and fight for our freedom to choose what's best for our families. God bless your work and your family. Okay, this is from Barry and Heather Bojerate. We respect your request that our City of Palmer Council does not implement the mask mandate in Palmer, Alaska. If this mandate is implemented, we and others will likely be forced to go elsewhere to support a business where masks are not mandatory and regulated, as this violates our basic human rights as Americans. Mandating face coverings or other regulation of basic human rights of the right to privacy and of person by the Fourteenth Amendment, which prohibits states from making laws that infringe on the personal economy protections provided in the Thirteen Amendments is a direct violation of overreach of government. Additionally, the following list includes, but not limited to, supportive reasons that mask mandates should be rejected and denied. There have been no clear convincing scientific verification that mask mandate will protect you or anyone else from COVID-19, not to mention the fact that masks themselves are believed to be hot and ineffective as a percentage of particles that escapes masks is extremely high. If you disagree and believe they're effective, then by your standard of mask wear would be protected and therefore mandated, or all masks would be invalid. Urban Health's internal medicine AP journals is specifically safe. Ober and Rousseau demonstrate that surgical masks are not exhibit adequate filter performance against aerosols. In conclusion, those surgical and cotton masks seem to be ineffective presenting the dissemination of SARS-CoV-2 from cause of patients with COVID-19 due to environment internal mass surface. Additionally, according to research data, should be notified that 3M filtrate MP280 are advertised as filter on particles as small as .3 microns, the size of some virus, while SARS-CoV-2 is reported to be .06 to .014 microns in size. So, relative efficacy to efficiently filter pathogens during this current pandemic is truly unknown. COVID-19 has a diameter approximately 60 to 140, NM, I don't know exactly this, .06 to .14 microns. Therefore, the size of particles of SARS-CoV-2 COVID-19 is even smaller than the outbreak in the 2002-2004 SARS-CoV, and it's too small for any mask to be effective. Given this fact, it would make the question, if you believe masks are so effective, then why are mask mandated cities are the numbers of COVID cases higher than other areas? This matter has so many other factors that need to be considered, the factor of urban immunity, rights and freedoms of citizens, business, and economic loss. Number two, to be clear, this is not an issue as to whether masks should be recommended. The issue at hand is that masks should be forced upon individuals with a threat of policing of government. Be mandated with little. Next, we have, it looks like Kitty Owens. It has brought to my attention that Sabrina Coles has suggested a mask mandate and modeled her suggestion after the City of Anchorage. As a taxpay resident of Palmer, Alaska, I have absolutely, I have to absolutely disagree with her request. I believe what makes living in a valley area so wonderful is respect of our individual choice, and that is a right that should be not infringed upon. There are signs in the major grocery stores and restaurants requesting masks is worn when entry, and from what I've seen, people do uphold those requests when asked. But turning that request into an order for the people of Palmer, Alaska is very worrisome. Myself and my family both tested positive for COVID-19 despite COVID-19 facilities with extremely strict PPE policies and guidelines to follow. The Center for Evidence-Based Medicine at Oxford University summarized six international studies that show that masks alone have no significant effect at interrupting spread of virus in the general population, and cause masks are less effective filtering out just 3% of particles. This is just one example, though there are many other credible studies that show a lack of mask efficacy. As Palmer, Alaska residents, I believe we have the right to our individual freedoms and ability to make choices for ourselves. I completely reject the notion of political body towards side of fate for myself and if my neighbors by forcing other mandates, policies, restrictions, or cons. I want to share a major concern I have regarding Sabrina Coles. It appears she has an affiliation with Anchorage Assembly Member Chris Constant. This is someone who feels uncomfortable making decisions, suggesting choices for myself and my peers. I hope you take this into consideration. Thank you for your time. Ali K. Taka, hello, I'm opposed to mask mandate is unethical and unconstitutional. Read my comments that goes to public record. To Cora Patterson, I'm opposed to proposed mandate for City of Palmer. Tracy Paulson, it has brought to my attention that mask mandate is being considered for City of Palmer. I am writing this to let you know that I'm against such a measure. Anchorage passed a mask mandate only to have the positive test numbers get higher every day. Meanwhile, people cannot wear masks, are being bullied for masks, or something that doesn't appear to be helping. I myself am unable to wear a mask. I cannot go anywhere in Anchorage, and I feel at least I have some freedom to get out of Palmer. I feel people of Palmer have been responsible, safe in their activities, and low numbers have, along with our children being in school. Shows that there's currently no reason for such a mask mandate in the city. Next is from Caleb Hemkic, and he's already spoken in person. Next is Jeff Phelps. I moved my family to the valley in 1984. Our youngest child was born in Palmer 30 years ago. Matsu is a great place to live and is not Anchorage. We should all remember that Palmer isn't Anchorage, nor should we want to become like Anchorage. The COVID scare has already altered many of our well-established patterns of living. It is troubling, however, to see how quickly some people believe the disease should be used to increase the power of national, state, and local governments to dictate the details of people's lives. Some of us have gone into uniform, the United States Military Services, spent part of our youth fighting wars on foreign soil. Why did I spend two years slogging through jungles in a faraway land? It was not because it was fun, it's because I believed in the liberty granted me by United States of America in its form of government. And I believe that people in other parts of the world should not have to live under tyranny. We did our best to keep tyranny from ruling in Vietnam, even though ultimately our effort was unsuccessful, so were my friends die trying. But none of us in those days believed we would someday see our home government use a disease as an excuse for tyrannical dictating that we would wear, where we could go with and who we should associate. Yet it is exactly what this proposed ordinance pushes us towards. Aside from a lack of clear scientific evidence that masks are the right solution to the alleged problem, there is a question of authority to be considered. How can anyone possibly believe that being elected to City Council somehow gives that person the right to act as if the entire region is populated with kindergarten children under care? We don't need that, as Governor Dunleavy has suggested, as they're fully capable of making their own health decisions. We find it is up to decisions on our own. We constantly hear pro-choice crowds tell us, "Governs should keep your hands off our bodies," fine. Sounds like a real response to this proposed ordinance. Please do not have this ordinance. We don't need it, and there is clear evidence that enforced mask wearing can be downright dangerous for some people. Perhaps more people than actually even know. Moreover, given the tiny percentage of valley people who are actually sick enough from COVID to be hospitalized, the threat is minimal. The danger certainly does not rise to the level that justifies draconian measures by local government that curtail the liberty of free people. This is from Liz Phelps. I am in complete disagreement with mask mandate in Palmer. It has breached our freedom to mandate such a thing. There must be respect that we are free to make our own choices regarding wearing such a thing. I fully endorse being respectful of our fellow Americans, part of that duty lies in responsibility of each person staying at home when sick, so mitigate the spread of many illnesses out there. The other duty of respect is that the freedom to choose whether to wear masks may have helped. City of Palmer will suffer great economic loss from the choice of the mandates. I am one of those who will no longer exist in the Palmer's mandate set in place. I've already cut back on support of businesses in Anchorage by over 90% due to the mandate here. I'm sorry for small businesses and churches that suffer because of political agendas and power-hungry politicians that think they know best. They are not listening to American people or being loyal themselves by infringing on their freedoms in this manner. Let's get some music. Okay, next we have from Natalie Phelps. I do not think it is necessary right for mask mandate to be imposed upon the people of Palmer rather than legislating. These issues should be left to the individuals to decide. If someone wants a mask, that person can choose to do it for themselves. It is not needed that a mask mandate be imposed upon City of Palmer. My family will choose to frequent places that are not mask mandated. Okay, this is from Chad Phelps. I'm writing to you in opposition for the mask mandatory, mandatory mask mandate. I feel masks are an individual choice and should not be mandated or enforced by government. Please consider voting no on this issue. This is from Kennedy Reese. It has come to my attention that a mask mandate may be voted in, and I'm writing to you on behalf of many residents of Palmer. I moved to Palmer seven years ago and fell in love with this community and a wide variety of people that represent our great city. Also different, yet always worked to keep togetherness in our community. I feel as if the city mandate is made to bring unnecessary divisions to our community. I appreciate the efforts of wanting to protect our community, but there is simply not enough evidence of mask efficacy to be enforcing American citizens to wear them just to protect them from a flu that has a 99.6% recovery rate in State of Alaska. We have more chances of dying of heart disease and malpractice than this flu. I suggest instead of masks, we encourage Palmer to take action. It is actually proven to help fight sickness and strengthen our immunity. Exercise, healthy eating, and vitamins. We could encourage local restaurants to add healthier options or menus. We could even have evening walks that everyone could participate in. And if we already have marches, I feel it'd just be safe to have walks where they can practice social distancing. And we can fully support local businesses that sell vitamins, herbal teas, and hydrating beverages. We are not going to fight this flu by hiding in our homes or wearing masks. We'll fight it by focusing on individual health and supporting each other through two. Palmer has always been different and done things differently. That scandalous flu differently than our surrounding cities. Neil Pilgrim, I oppose mask mandate because I think it's an assault on our freedom. Masks turn us into zombies where all communication, interaction is lost. I will shag word 03, read as soon as it records. Brian Plummer, I am writing this letter in opposition to closed mask ordinance in question. When media is supporting a surge in COVID-19 cases, we have not seen corresponding rise in hospitalization deaths in Matsu Borough, Palmer, State of Alaska, or United States in general. Since the beginning of the crisis, most of the models, data, and predictions of experts have proven completely off-base. Isn't fortunate that those new standards of COVID reporting. I had to take it three minutes. I know I'm slow, I'm not that slow. Okay, when contemplating the value of mask mandate, we can look next door to Anchorage and see how they fare with their mandates and closures. Anchorage is sitting around a .043 infection rate, and Matsu Borough is sitting at a .021. Anchorage COVID restrictions are far stronger than proposed Palmer ordinance, and as we all know, have been in place for duration of crisis. According to a poll done in August by ADN, one in six Anchorage small businesses do not think they will make it through this crisis. Palmer's had two establishments opened in the last few weeks, Leaning Heart Brewery and Matthews Brewery Restaurant. We recently saw a social media coach from the owner of Matthews Brewery talk about how much he was looking forward to opening his new restaurant in Palmer. Then he compared the business atmosphere of the valley, and Anchorage discussed how much the current COVID regulations in Anchorage have negatively impacted his ability to operate and be profitable. These two businesses spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, greater visions to life, and have done it in a local fashion as anyone could ask for. Well, Silla has a much higher population base to draw from, but they chose Palmer. It's a 60-day mandatory mask ordinance. However, probably want to welcome them to town. The businesses in Palmer are supported from all over the state. A mandatory mask mandate will drive away customers. COVID has a significant impact to small businesses across America, yet local economy seems to be chugging wrong. I do not think anyone will discredit Palmer's small business-driven. Is there a reason the council wants to shoot them in the foot? If a business wants their customers to wear masks or establish it, that is their prerogative, and they can accept potential loss of business that may come with decision. It is not a function of City Council to dictate what business owners do to store. I doubt this type of government overreach will settle out of Alaskians in general and have future consequences as other businesses look to expand and pick other communities to do so. Okay, this is from Sally Holden. Sally has known this all night long. And Sally writes, "I am hereby stating my adamant opposition to this proposed ordinance. I'm not a percent opposed to the proposal to the mask silence the buyers and sellers in Palmer for 60 days. I would be against it for one day. There have been no determined signs that masking the general public prevents the spread of COVID-19 virus. In reality, this proposed emergency ordinance speaks to no emergency at all, but is actually an exercising grabbing power of our individual freedoms and living and movement shop freely in this beautiful little town. Many of us are ready to stand up to this overreach for control by elected officials and shout, 'Not on my watch.' Palmer City Council, please mind the real business of Palmer and leave our personal lives alone. P.S. Would you really ask fellow business owners to turn in and treat customer shoppers as criminals for not wearing a mask?" This is Doug and Marlon Prin. In regards to Ms. Coles' proposed ordinance 2016, I am not opposed to any such ordinance for City of Palmer. We see it as government overreach that City Council has been elected to do. We would ask for proposed ordinance 2016, not be taxed. Caitlin Randall, hi, I've been a resident of Palmer, Tahquita, and now Willmark, Silla for over 20 years. I can tell you that City of Palmer does not need or want a mask mandate. You're trying to take away people's free choice. I shop in Palmer frequently. When I be shopping in Palmer, I'm forced to wear a mask. Small businesses will not survive. I would not support a mask mandate in Palmer or Alaska in general. I vote no. Okay, Esther Rehm, we are Palmer residents since 1975. We do not need a mask mandate in Palmer. It is ridiculous that Sabrina is trying to take her rights and mine rights away from me and the Palmer residents. If she chooses to wear masks, that's fine, but if others don't, that's her choice as well. Deb Reimer, I am writing to you, City of Palmer Council, regarding the proposed mask mandate for City of Palmer. I, along with a multitude of other residents in the great Palmer area, oppose this kind of mandate like this. This is totally unnecessary. This would place an unnecessary burden on Palmer businesses to have to enforce such a thing, as well as council infringing on our personal rights. We do not need to be treated like children. We know how to be careful and how to recognize that we respond to our own health. Instead, a mask mandate and government overreach should just become, why not perjure tell us an example for healthy living such as exercise, vitamin D, vitamin C, healthy eating, etc., etc. I would rather spend money on dispensing vitamin C and D3 to those who need it rather than trying to provide our mandate chemical aid mask for us to breathe into. No one feels very good after wearing these things. No one feels very good after wearing these things. That should give us a clue that they aren't very good for us, that no, I don't believe my health is more important than your freedom. Our fathers, our founders made their lives and all they owed for our freedoms we enjoy today. I feel it should just be left up to individual businesses to make their own decision. If they don't require masks, that is their right, and people will choose to respect that. If they don't require it, that's their right too. It's interesting how some will claim my body and my right when it comes to abortion, but those who oppose being mandated to wear masks somehow are slapped down on the same thing as said in regards to being forced to wear masks on our body. Rebecca Rindall. I'm strongly against your mask mandate. You seem to be proud of the fact that you want to structure this mask mandate like Anchorage. Well, we are not Anchorage, and if you like Anchorage so much, I invite you to move to Anchorage and leave Palmer alone. There is not one town, state, or country that mask mandates have refused to spread of C-19. In fact, if you look at CDC studies prior to C-19, it found that masks do not slow or stop the spread of any virus. All you will do with your mandate is drive a wedge between the citizens of Palmer. Please leave your personal feelings at home and listen to the actual people's community and overwhelmingly against the mask mandate. Owen Rindell. I'm showing against your mask mandate. Seems you guys are proud of the fact you structured like Anchorage. Well, we are not Anchorage, and if you like Anchorage so much, I invite you to move to Anchorage and leave us alone. Okay, Stan Roach. My name is Stan Roach. I and my wife lived in Alaska for 40 years. I am now reading from testing guidelines put out by Center of Disease Control Prevention. Should I be wearing a face mask? No, anyone who is wet. Yes, anyone for COVID-19 or symptoms. Yes, at a healthcare worker. Yes, if a caretaker or someone infected COVID-19. I have a doctor's degree and do not need a politician to tell me when I should wear masks or stay at home. I follow CDC recommendations, and I've done very well. Palmer, Alaska is not Anchorage, Alaska. Do not force us on us. It will cause much rebuilding of our people. We, people of Palmer, Alaska, have enough sense to know when to stay home and when to wear masks. Never tell a free man to, and never tell a free man. People cannot come into us home to worship God and sell our goods. Okay, that was Stan Roach, and this is Stanley J. Roach. In regards to Palmer mask mandate that the city council is considering, I am asking that the bigger picture be considered on behalf of our community. I believe everyone should be able to choose to wear masks if they feel will protect them and are loved ones. However, to impose such a mandate takes away our right to personal choice and forces business owners to enforce a policy they may or may not believe in. We live in Palmer, not Anchorage. Please do not mandate a policy that takes away the Alaskan spirit of choice and community and instead forces to informate. We will get through this pandemic health-wise, but we will never return to what we have community-wise if we pass these type of mandates. Elena Roberts. Dear Ms. Atlee and elected Palmer officials, I am writing to voice my strong opposition to the mask mandate for City Palmer. We recently moved out of Anchorage to Palmer to escape the irresponsible overreach of city government. It would be devastating to find that Palmer follows in Anchorage's footsteps. Anchorage should not be our model. As a lifelong resident in Anchorage up until two years ago, I've watched as policies and loaded government have ruined the place I have called home. They have mishandled this virus at every turn and attempted to enforce unconstitutional restrictions on Anchorage people only to see the virus spike and rise in ways. The mask mandates have not helped. In fact, many studies have shown that wearing masks for prolonged periods of time is extremely unhealthy and actually hurting more than helping, but it is another point entirely. Forcing masks upon the City of Palmer will force citizens who, for a variety of reasons, cannot or will not wear masks to take their businesses outside the city. Or even worse, this mandate would force many people into further isolation, the effects of which have already been seen to lead to oppression, abuse, and suicide. Most of us have been negatively affected by the government's action, whether local or federal, than we had by this virus. I am pleading with you to listen to the people that represent when they say they want freedom in Palmer. We want to be allowed to follow our own conscience and allow others to do the same. Please say no to a mask mandate in our beautiful city. Seth Roberts. Regarding any position or mandate by the Palmer City Council for a mask mandate, I would like to state that I am firmly against it. I wholeheartedly respect an individual's choice to wear masks or not. Even the governor in his emergency declaration yesterday said he would not mandate masks and advise each person to do the right thing. I would ask Palmer residents to follow the thinking allowing Palmer residents take care of themselves and one another for mandates. Thank you for your time.
There's Jeff Roberts on the back of Elena Roberts.
Okay, uh, oh, sorry, Jeff. Okay, Jeff Roberts, saved by the mayor. I am a Palmer resident and want to voice my opinion on the matter. I have read many articles regarding use of face masks and have little or no effects to avoid spreading the virus. He cites one example from Google, as well as studies to show that adverse effects of wearing masks from clinical medical journals. Along with the adverse effect from wearing masks from a specific article, also reports CDC verbiage indicating ineffective in wearing masks. It says, "While surgical masks provide a barrier against large respiratory particles, they are ineffective at providing protection for smaller particles." Surgical masks also do not prevent leakage around the mask when the inhaler user inhales. Therefore, surgical masks are ineffective and do not provide enough protection when performing direct care for patients with COVID-19. Some questions to consider: Do the majority of people even wear a quality of mask as a surgical mask? Have the spread of the virus decreased in heavily mandated areas? I believe the answer is no. The virus is finding ways to spread regardless of mask usage and other mandates. Please don't eliminate the choice and liberty for Palmer residents to decide for themselves whether to wear masks or not. I strongly disagree with mask mandate encouraged. Powers to be, do not vote in effect. Okay, this is...did I do Donna Edner Roberts yet?
No.
Okay. Donna Edner Roberts. Please, no mandates of any sort. This is the United States of America, the land of the free and home of the brave. Enough said, have another day. Kelsey Roth. My name is Kelsey Roth, and husband and I lived in downtown Palmer for three years. My husband and I love Palmer for its charm, sense of community, and overall small-town feeling and atmosphere. I've said it many times, if I didn't live in Palmer, I would not live in Alaska. Although we recently moved tenants outside city limits, we've maintained our real estate downtown. I do all of my family grocery shopping and much of my local shopping and eating downtown. My husband works for Matthew's Delight. We are very much physically, financially, emotionally invested in Palmer. Throughout this COVID-19 pandemic, fear has been rampant. First, we were scared because it was a new disease and doctors weren't sure how to treat it. Then it was feared that hospitals were completely overwhelmed and PPE supplies were insufficient. I was personally thorough from work as a dental hygienist and order preserve PPE for all essential medical needs. Most importantly, widespread death of Alaskans were feared to be immeasurable. I'm so happy that in most cases, COVID-19 does not require hospitalization and medical treatment. It is such a wonderful thing for early 2020 predictions that are wrong. While this flu is very real, this flu, the flu of the 99-plus% survival rate. For individuals who should choose to continue personal protective measures such as public mask wearing, I respect that for a choice. That's wonderful that so many restaurants and businesses and churches have accommodated for the needs of this population and virtually service and be assessed with a number of ones home without leaving or leaving their homes. For those waiting for and wanting a vaccine, I respect you. However, I believe that punishment or public shaming individuals who so choose not to wear masks and continue their business life as normal is wrong. Not wearing masks does not mean that individuals do not care for the community. For some, it's a sign that they trust their bodies and innate immune system that fight off the disease, believing they'll be stronger after battle, natural antigens, and immunity. No vaccines needed. America is envied and beloved worldwide for freedoms. Individuals are loudly encouraged exercise. Why would COVID-19 strip those freedoms away? Stop the mandates, stop the fear mongering, stop the division between maskers and anti-maskers, vaccinations against anti-daxers, Republicans against Democrats. When individual differences are celebrated and debated, unity is born. I urge you not to make mask mandates that encourage division within the community. Consider the freedom of choice of individuals and individual businesses in Palmer. This is from Hillary Sappel. I ask my email to be read in our paper details. Must wear masks whenever sixty from anyone in your household. All employees in Palmer must wear a mask blend with customers. Must require compelled removal of non-employed individuals or businesses or building their own in Palmer. City Palmer reserves the right to use all of animal enforcement offices to ensure compliance. Arguments against masks. No scientific verification that your mask election will protect you or anyone else from COVID-19. Governor Dudley is not mandating masks on entire state. My freedoms are being taken away when the government mandates masks. Palmer City Council, please do not implement the mask mandate in Palmer. If this is implemented, I will go elsewhere to support businesses where masks are not mandatory and avoid doing business in Palmer whenever possible. This is from Barry, or excuse me, from Ben Sandy. Please do not implement the mask mandate in Palmer. If this is implemented, I will go elsewhere to support businesses where masks are not mandatory and avoid doing business in Palmer whenever possible. This is from Nathan Charman. I strongly oppose the mask mandate, mask ordinance for City Palmer. Businesses should not be allowed to use their own discretion. Businesses should be allowed to use their own discretion to determine whether a mask is necessary or not for both employees and customers. Customers who feel unsafe at business should take their business to a company that shares their mindset. This ordinance is a violation of freedom and should not be against. This is from Kate Schubert. The insanity of government overreach and personal invasion by these mask mandates are an insult on our individual lives and preferences to choose. There is much more at stake than just a few people contracting a virus with such an insignificant effect on majority and overwhelming survival rate. The damage this mandate will cause destroys, will cause destroys far more than just health. It destroys livelihood and a domino effect will roll downhill from there. I will refuse to comply. This is wrong on so many levels. Anchorage to yours. Okay, from Jenny Schmidt. Please do not implement a mask mandate in Palmer. If this is implemented, I will go elsewhere to support businesses where mask mandates are not mandatory and avoid doing business in Palmer wherever possible. Also, from William Schmidt. Please do not implement a mask mandate in Palmer. If this is implemented, I will go elsewhere to support businesses where mask mandates are not mandatory and avoid doing business in Palmer wherever possible, like many people. Okay, this is from Rebecca Schrepper. Schrepper. I'm against a mask mandate in as strong as possible terms. This is not freedom. Requiring masks is infringing on simple liberties. I am not legally responsible for health and well-being in others. I am only responsible for my own health and safety and for that of my own children. The choice to wear a mask for benefit of others should remain an individual choice and not a law. In fact, this mandate would deputize local business owners to enforce it. I do not believe you have the power to do that. You will have just given struggling small businesses another regulation applied with. Business owners are not enforcement agencies. Let's not create a liability for them. This could also create a liability for business because they will be getting medical advice without a medical license. To use all available enforcement options to ensure compliance is overbearing and authoritarian. I support people through their right to wear masks, but not mandating them. This is from Daniel Schruter of Schruter Trucking and Escaping. I have been a loyal business owner in the Valley for the past 28 years. I raised my family to continue and watch my children raise my grandchildren here in the Valley. We've chosen Palmer as our home because of the amazing community. A mask mandate that is being talked about frustrates me and causes incredible turmoil. Please listen to me as I speak for myself and my family. Don't create a law for us without masks on our face, both immune system for times like these. That being said, cycle life has always existed and continue to exist to weather its COVID-19. Spanish flu are one of many other diseases that the human race has seen during our acoustic. Part of life is depth or disease. I believe that everyone should and has the right to decide whether they want to wear a mask or not. If you believe that masks are going to protect you and others, then by all means, wear one. However, just as I respect the choice of others to wear masks, I do not believe that choice should be decided for me. Whatever your choice is or mine, we need to continue respecting each other's choices no matter what. As a community, we're going to all get COVID at some point or another. I understand slowing the curve and trying not to overwhelm resources. However, a mask mandate is not the solution. Once you start telling me what, telling I or our community can or cannot do, where will stop? You say for the greater good, but you don't know me, my family, or my circle. Part of the beauty of the community, of our community, state and country, is the ability to have choice. I'm not fighting for you to demand one way or the other. I'm fighting for the rights that started this nation to have a right to choose. The solution is not going to be creating a mass panic among the community while taking our basic rights of choice away. The basic solution we need to be looking at and encourage our community and businesses to do is what we have done every year as a flu, cold, or whatever virus hardship comes our way. Wash your hands in soap and water. If you're sick, stay home. Continue to unite to the amazing community we are. Look out for a neighbor and family and pray. Don't let this cause an even worse pandemic of hate and unrest, but continue to allow us to choose what we believe to be the best interest for ourselves and business. From Greg Schultz. The potential mask mandate removes choice for Palmer residents and only amps up the fear that is already immobilizing and isolating too many of us. The low number of cases in our area along with the mild symptoms does not warrant such an overreach. The opinions of a few must not dictate the freedoms of many, and each one has God's natural given right to be self-responsible. Please allow the capable citizens of our community to show common sense and do not enforce mandates upon us that fall on business owners and fellow citizens to enforce. This does not build community trust, provide hope in the weeks ahead. The course that the city council has taken over the months has proven very solid and satisfactory, and that course needed not to be altered. This is from Martha Schultz. Please, please consider all the residents of Palmer who are determining COVID mandates. Have masks been effective? I don't see how if the state tells us the numbers are going up, please let good citizens in area make mature decisions for themselves. You have used good wisdom in the past, and I commend you for it. Please do not cave to political pressure, especially as total cases in Palmer have been relatively low, but the economic implications measured could be devastating. I urge the council to vote no on a mask mandate. Rodney Schultz. Please do not implement a mask mandate in Palmer. If this is implemented, I will go elsewhere to support businesses where masks are not mandatory and avoid doing business in Palmer whenever possible. Sarah Schollings. I'm very concerned. Oh, I'm sorry. Hello, my name is Sarah Schollings. I live in Willsilla. However, Natsuboro is my home. I've lived in Eagle River, Alaska since 1978. I'm very concerned about the push to mandate masks for City Palmer. Where does this end? Will we flatten the curve again? Whose response was determined by someone? Virus is built in. Testing everybody regardless is not wise either. To follow the foolish guidelines, guidance of the Anchorage Assembly is not only a slap in the face of Palmer residents, but is reckless, not to mention the testing numbers don't add up. When you have a virus of almost 100% survival rate for the majority of people, a mask mandate is useless. I'm not going to go into mask working or not working. The residents of Palmer are perfectly capable of handling their own health. I urge the city council to please don't go down this road. This is, this is from Tony Seeland. It looks like it's... Oh, okay. Chen Shakashow. Hi, my name is Chen Shakashow. I'm a resident of the great city of Palmer. I moved out of Palmer because, I moved out to Palmer because I love the small-town feeling with all the great folks here, and most importantly, less government intrusion into our personal lives. We are not Anchorage, nor do we have the same population of us, so please don't govern like Anchorage mayors. I feel that the newly appointed deputy mayor is using... I feel that the newly appointed deputy mayor is using her newfound power to push the ironical agenda that the city of Palmer does not heed. I feel that we, before ordinance 2016, has rammed into the faces of residents of Palmer, and the floodgates will open up for more government overreach in the future. Yes, there's a second wave of COVID outbreak around the state of Alaska, and frankly, it's all around the world. Anchorage has had a mask mandate since June. Its infection rates are still climbing. Providing, mandating mask wearing is not a solution. Please take the cue from the governor and ask the citizens to wear masks, but in no force is to wear one. That's time we check if we are still living in the United States of America. Thank you for your time. Okay. This is from Tony Seeland. This is going to expire on you. Natalie. I just found out about the meeting this evening. So much you convey, and this has been my least favorite way of communication, but limiting the council chambers to ten total people is not public testimony. I must confess, this summer, despite all the trials and tribulations occurring on global scale, it has been nice to live in our island like the atmosphere of Palmer. Meeting contracts has been a highlight that few, that few communities have been able to enjoy and speaks to independent nature of our community. I've had weekly interactions of people coming out to Palmer to escape the suppression of Anchorage and those that could have sold their Anchorage homes and moved to the valley for this sense of calm, level-headed sense of community that has suddenly come up too short around this nation. There is no possible level of human interface today and after convey, which I like to stress. One cannot know how someone looks at life without walking in their shoes. And for me, reality has emerged over many lifetimes. So I will attempt to convey a short message with a couple of highlights and a million of options and knowledge I can convey from the physics that every action creates opposite and adverse reaction. Let's start with the first part of Declaration of Independence. In Congress, July 4, 1776, the United Declaration of 13, United States of America. Then, in force of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another and to assume among the powers of the earth that separate and equal station to which the laws of nature of God's entitled them. A descent respect to the opinions of mankind requires patient declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by the Creator of certain manable rights, among these are light, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Security's rights, governments are instituted among them, deriving their powers from the consent of the government, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it. To institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. These were bold words, carefully scripted and boldly signed by our founders, who, in doing so, committed a treasonous act against the crown, punishable by death. Thank God for your boldness. I would like to review several details that seem to be forgotten today's world. All men are created equal, that they are endowed by their to Marine. This is, um...is it 10 o'clock yet? Uh-huh, sorry. I'll read this one, then we can switch. Because I like these people's names. This is, this is Maxim and Maria Zepira. Do not enact a mask mandate. It is unconstitutional, ineffective, as indicated by CDC website that you yourselves reference in the ordinance text, harmful to the health of your constituents, to any others doing business in the city, and shows an utter lack of concern for your city residents' race and well-being. If you truly are the opinion this is a good move, do your constituents a decent move of asking them first. This is not about keeping people safe, as likely they all understood already, this is inconsistent measure that falls apart under even modicum of scrutiny. Reference below attached sources, and there is four of them. Speaking of, from the HWO's most recent pamphlet, Advice to Decisionmakers on Use of Masks for General Public. Many countries have recommended use of fabric masks face罩s for general public. And at present times, widespread use of masks by healthy people and community setting is not yet supported by high quality of direct scientific evidence, there is no potential benefits or harm to consider. Okay, and so, okay, here we go. Conclusion. Recommended to wear surgical masks as supplement health measures did not reduce the SARS-CoV-2 infection rate among wares by more than 50% in community with modest infection rates. Seven degrees social distancing and uncommon general mask use in this data were incompatible or addable lesser degrees of self-protection. Can I, can I do a three-minute break?
Oh, sure. Uh-huh. We're gonna go ahead and take a 10-minute break. You say eight twenty-five here.
Hi, guys. I told you it was coming. As soon as the break was there, I was going to stop this video and restart it. We've got about 10 minutes, sometime in the next 10 minutes, this will re-rebegin again. If you haven't already, went to my website at politik.com, go there right now, click that donate button, help me to afford to be able to make more events like this. I am using a brand-new microphone that was almost $300 to purchase today, so that you guys can actually hear what is being said on the other side of those barrier protections, the ones that I was using during the last live stream from this place. You couldn't hear nothing. So hopefully, you're actually able to hear some of the voices being talking here right now, and also looking to expand to get podcast equipment. My studio is moving right along. We've got TVs, new computers, all this other great stuff that I purchased with the previous donations. We're going to see, we want to expand. We need your help to do it. Go to our website, politik.com. Again, I'll be restarting this here in just a few minutes. Don't forget to like and share, and do not forget to re-like and share the new video as soon as it starts. Thank you all.